Good class.
Let's get started. So the, um, the, um, special meeting of the Administration and Finance Subcommittee is now called to order. Um, may we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Potain Silverstein?
I'm here as well.
You have a forum.
Thank you. Could you please provide a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda was properly posted on Thursday, June fifth, twenty twenty five.
Thank you very much. Um, I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay.
On the paper?
We both, we obviously both have paper because it was a motion and a second, but they're only people here. So, yeah, so that's approved. Okay, first item is just general public comment for matters that are not on the agenda. So this would be comment about things other than the grant program that we're here to discuss today.
I'm Ellen.
Pamela, you're first.
You want to just sit here? I just wanted to thank everyone. This is like the best meeting of the year. All the people here are amazing. They, I'm, I'm on the Arts Commission and we're trying to do the Year of Love, Hope and Healing, maybe an event in the fall. And I would urge everyone here to contact me if you want to be included. We're going to try and raise money, another way that you can get revenue besides these grants. And thank you for all of you for your service for Malibu.
Thank you, Pamela. Anne, you're next.
Just basically, I, I would-
Could you call up, please?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
A simple request is that the community be able to put on lives in the community.
Okay. That is it for the general public comment. We have no presentations or staff updates. We have no old business. We have only one matter then, which is the one item of new business, which is the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six, general fund grants. Uh, do we have a staff report or do we just go right to public comment?
I don't have anything prepared. Um, historically, we just want to straight to public comment. I can provide a brief overview.
Go ahead. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
So this is the presentation for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, the General Fund Grant Program. It's a program the city, um, prepares annually to benefit nonprofits for, um, local organizations. Uh, this year we received thirty-two grant applications totaling one million dollars, one million thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. Um, and, and requested funds and, uh, proposed budget for, uh, this program this year is two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. We've got giant booklet of applications and supporting materials and I know we both reviewed this carefully. So, um, we'll go to the public comment then. Are there slips?
We have twenty speaker slips today.
Okay.
Would you like to keep the time at three minutes?
Um, yes, please.
All right. The first speaker is Pamela.
Do you want me to stand up or is, what is, what do you prefer?
I think the best thing would be for someone, whoever speaks to come over here in the corner. That way everybody would be addressed not just us.
And you can be heard on the camera. I appreciate it. When you, uh, do your presentation, if you're speaking on behalf of one of the, uh, requesters, can you let us know which one it is so we can make sure the notes go with it?
Okay. So, good afternoon. My name is Pamela Conley Ullik. I am a representative today as a volunteer of the Friends of Malibu Urgent Care Board. This past year has been tragic for everyone, the people who've lost their homes, for our community, the Palisadesians, and the urgent care is hurting. It's really life or death. I, uh, Dr. Katz is working today. He might be able to come and stop by. But the clinic has lost thirty percent of its revenue. It's down, I think, one point three million. And they're the only clinic that has opened three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And if they don't get this money, it could be the difference of somebody having a heart attack and dying because their doors won't be open. I hate to come ask for this money because there's so many great organizations here, but the board had to. Uh, I appreciate all of your consideration. I hope Dr. Katz will come. I've asked people to come to testify. They have saved a lot of lives. Um, without this money, the doors may close. And I really hope if you have any questions, you can ask Dr. Katz, but it's in the application. As you can see, uh, thirty percent of their income is down this year because of the Palisades fire and PCH being closed. And just a quick reflection, during the fires, we went to urgent care. I was with, uh, our, uh, councilperson, Halen Conrad, and Dr. Pike was there. She had to evacuate with her own children, but she was there. Not only was she there, she was there helping firefighters who were coming in. One of them was a kid that my kids played soccer with who had a black eye and he was hurt from the fires. So she was there. She was helping our firefighters. She's helping our community. Dr. Katz, Dr. Dan Katz is another amazing person that we have working for all of us. So I would strongly urge for you to help keep the doors open and it is really a matter of life and death. And thank you for your time and service.
Thank you, Pamela.
Uh, I just want to make a comment. Uh, when that matter has come before, I actually accused myself, I'm the former treasurer of the Friends of Malibu Urgent Care. My wife isn't now.
Actually, I, can I ask a question about that one or? Would you prefer we, if we had questions, we ask them as we go along or do you want to wait until we're?
I think, look, this is an open, it's just the two of us, so it's, it's free.
So Doug, we're, um, I'm waiting to answer. Um, is the urgent care itself a for-profit enterprise or a not-for-profit enterprise?
The urgent care itself is separate from the Friends of Malibu Urgent Care. I, I, I have to get that information from Dr. Katz, what kind of organization. The Friends of Malibu Urgent Care is a nonprofit.
What does Friends of Malibu Urgent Care do besides for provide funding to urgent care?
We, we supplement so they can keep their doors open after hours, for example. We'll give money for funding the staff to be there.
Okay. So, Doug, do you know if urgent care is a for-profit enterprise?
Uh, it's operated as the Friends of Malibu Urgent Care is the actual doctor's operation. And the Friends of, uh, Malibu Urgent Care is a five oh one C three. The primary function is to provide, uh, funds in order to keep the urgent care operating. It is a nonprofit that supports a for-profit. There's a tax, uh, since tax research has been done to make sure this is legitimate. And, um, that's all I can say about it.
Yeah, Dr. Katz isn't here and the for-profit is not requesting. Oh, Dr. Katz is here. I will defer to you, but the Friends is requesting it, not Dr. Katz.
I understand this and, and, and I don't denigrate in any way, shape or form and I appreciate the service the urgent care provides to Malibu. I'm trying to explain how that's different than somebody who created a nonprofit to support the restaurants in our city.
No, no.
Um, which are for, which are all for-profit enterprises. How, how is the Friends of Urgent Care, other than as a, as a separate entity, different than the urgent care itself?
Right. Um, the Friends of the Urgent Care was founded back in two thousand and two to support, um, extended hours operations, which means after the hour of five P M. and also weekend hours. Um, and also to help provide, uh, equipment for the facility to keep it, uh, operational and up to date. The urgent care is a money-losing business. We would not be, we would not be, uh, viable at all as an organization, as a, as a for-profit organization. We're in now for the, uh, support of the Friends of the Urgent Care. Our deficit is approximately six hundred thousand dollars per year. And that has been augmented by the, um, the strain of the recent fires. Uh, as all other businesses in town have, uh, suffered, so have we. We've seen about a twenty-five to thirty percent decrease in volume walking through our doors. Uh, and so the combined stresses of increased, uh, pay mandated by, uh, California, decreased reimbursement by insurance companies, increased cost of healthcare goods, um, and trying to maintain adequate staffing and adequate hours for the city of Malibu have created this perfect storm.
So, given that you operate at a deficit and I assume anticipate doing so for the foreseeable future, why not just have the urgent care be a not-for-profit entity in the first place and then make the application directly through the urgent care?
Right. We've looked into that actually and there are a number of constraints, uh, that prevent us from doing so. A facility that is, generally that is, uh, allowed for, uh, by the IRS hospitals. Uh, we're not linked to any particular hospital. Uh, hospitals, uh, are able to get their, uh, five oh one C three status if they meet a certain set of criteria. Some of those include being operational for twenty-four hours per day, having a call panel, having access to emergency services. And our facility does, does none of those things.
So it's your understanding you don't qualify for not-for-profits now?
That's correct. We look into that.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, of course.
Well, I would say one thing and I need to be quiet. Uh, heads on the cusp. But, uh, there is a five oh one C three, uh, letter from the IRS that goes back to the early two thousands.
That's correct. And it also recently underwent review by Gibson Dunn with a very large, um, um, letter in support of, of our, our operation.
Okay. Thank you. Of course. Who's next?
Me.
Joel?
If you have something, I'm gonna stop watching. There's no clock.
I'm here for you.
Okay, uh, yeah, here, I'm, I'm here for poison-free Malibu. Um, we've been supported for a few years by you guys, which is wonderful. Um, we're asking for seven thousand dollars, which is a bit more than last year. What we spend money on is, um, uh, for example, ads of the Malibu Times, Malibu Times Magazine. These are in the order of four, five, six hundred dollars an ad, um, to promote, uh, the, uh, you know, poison-free protection of wildlife and, uh, asking people not to use pesticides in Malibu. We also put in ads in the paper to support the Point Dune, uh, repulling, the Point Dune Preserve, repulling efforts. Uh, just an ad, uh, to, to help recruit people to do that, which is one of our main efforts right now. Uh, we have, you know, hundreds of dollars of cost for various things. Here's something that's really taken off, you know, you never know when it's gonna really go nuts here. But this proves that, uh, artificial intelligence will not replace Sandy Glover, who made this coloring book, which is just full of personality and, you know, you can't, AI would not do it. And this is just, we're asking, we're getting requests for hundreds of these things. Uh, many, you know, hundreds within Malibu and also Calabasas and, uh, there were, and the National Wildlife Federation. For them, we, we're not going to give them the books. We gave them the file so they can go get their own books. But we give it away to people in Malibu and these are like, uh, two or three dollars a piece. But, you know, and we just put in an order for six hundred of them for fourteen hundred bucks and we give it out all. It's just really popular. Teachers ask for, they'll just take anything you can give them. Also, we, uh, this is actually pretty effective. This is a yard sign. And if you have a, like, Malibu West has a lot of these. If you, if you have a neighborhood which has a critical mass of these signs, uh, you know, people actually, uh, you know, notice it, uh, and actually, you know, learn about the wildlife and the problem. Uh, so this, that's also effective. Um, so we do that kind of things. We, we get no money. There's no salaries, uh, of any kind. Uh, we do, you know, outside of Malibu a little bit, like, you know, with the Wildlife Crossing, we promote, uh, your Odette aside free boundary. Uh, we are, we were told we were approved for like the third or fourth year from L.A. County. Give us a really nice grant for billboards. Now unfortunately, you cannot see, you can't put billboards directly on the one oh one. That's completely not allowed. But you can put it next to the one oh one. We have some, we've had them, uh, on Ventura Boulevard. We've had them, what, really fantastic, on, running UCLA on, uh, on Westwood Boulevard. Uh, sort of depends on this, uh, the Clear Channel Billboard Company, which gives us a tremendous break. I mean, it's, I mean, billboards are incredibly expensive. You guys know that. It's like, you know, five, ten thousand bucks a month. And they'll do it for, for, uh, two hundred fifty bucks just because to put the thing up. And we got tape and building. Um, uh, uh, so we do that. We, um, we would, we're going to be promoting, we got an email. We need an environmental commission in the city of Malibu like the one Calabasas has.
Thanks, Joel.
Okay.
Next speaker, John Waza.
Good afternoon. I'm here for the Adamson House Foundation, which is not a state agency. We're elaborating fundraising and, uh, what we're asking for today is what we've asked for the last two years. We have very serious threat to, uh, the Adamson House, which is the last remaining range era structure in Malibu other than the pier, which is now damaged. And, uh, because we're in danger of losing foundation building in the, in the front lawn, which is our main source of revenue for the park, uh, due to sea rise. And same factors that are hitting the coast highway, as you know. So, the state, I listened to the city council meeting last night and, uh, or the night before, talking about a thirty-year plan for coast highway. We're trying to get ready for an emergency. To get the state to move on something like this, we're doing this, that's engineering study of the, the shoreline. Because, uh, if we get a big storm like eighty-three, we're gonna lose the house. To do that, we can't wait for now. We're funding the, the study, the engineering of how to soft, do a soft armoring of the coast there. This Sunday, I was down there and, uh, the, the water was right up to, right up to me.
And it's a minute now.
So, due to get the state to move, we have to get all the studies done and engineering done, be ready for an emergency permit. If the state doesn't fund it in the near term, if a big storm comes along, we have to do something very, very quickly. And so, uh, we've lost, we operate a, uh, a small gift center there, museum. We've lost eighty percent of our revenue with the fires. Nobody's coming out to go to the park. We got a little, some people this weekend, but, uh, this is something that if we don't follow through, we've done two years and it's almost, almost complete by the state telling us it's almost complete through their consultants, but it's not complete. So, um, this is, normally we just do things like fixing the roof, uh, you know, things that fall apart. It's almost a hundred-year-old building. But this, we, uh, concentrated on trying to get ready to save the house.
Why is, why is the state not maintaining this property?
Well.
I like that question.
Uh, state parks in general is, is the last thing funded and the first thing funded. And, uh, last year, in a good year, the budget for maintenance for, um, the L.A. district was one million dollars, one million. So, that's why.
John, a quick question. You talked about soft armor, armoring along there as a temporary fix perhaps. What is soft armor?
Well, it's soft armoring because they, it's, they, when we started, they insisted that we couldn't hard armor it. Soft armoring.
So you just call the same things?
No, no. This is gonna be rocks and logs and cement. And, and they have to engineer, so it's sort of like. It's not really a, a, a breakwater, but it's, it's got logs and, and part of the thing is to keep the river from coming that direction and washing it. Like, when they redid the river five years ago or ten years ago, they aimed it the wrong direction. It's been very detrimental.
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
Next speaker, Oscar Mondragon.
Could you say it again?
Oscar Mondragon.
Oscar Mondragon with the Labor Exchange. Um, as you may know, I don't know how many of you know that the Labor Exchange was founded in nineteen ninety-three by, uh, city council members at that time and also by local residents. We've been around for thirty-three years. And, uh, today, I want to, uh, thank you mainly for all the help throughout the years. Uh, our contribution nowadays because of the fires is we've been sending workers, we're volunteers going to help the, uh, Malibu High, Webster S. School and also the, uh, Boys and Girls Club. They, as you may know, they are giving things out to local residents. So we're sending workers, volunteers, not to pay. We help them almost every day. That's, we concentrate on that kind of work. And we're still here and we hopefully get your support again. And I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Marilyn Brady French.
Hello. My name's Marilyn. Um, I currently serve as a Director of Education for the Resource Conservation District, which serves, uh, our local Santa Monica Mountains. We're a small agency with a pretty big reach. We've been on the forefront after the fires, but long before that, um, our agency has been, um, working towards open the restoration. We monitor sensitive species. Um, but everything that we do, we are community engaged. Um, so I oversee the education department. Uh, we serve eight to, had eight to ten thousand youth each year throughout Los Angeles County and Ventura County. Um, and so for the project that, um, I'm applying for here is to serve about six hundred, uh, local Malibu youth. Um, we have our field programs at Malibu, the real estate beach, as well as, uh, Topia Park, where we bring students out, um, some of which have never been to the beach, um, and some of which have never been on hike. And, um, we hope for, of course, young stewards in the end, but really, uh, especially in post-traumatic times, it really is about healing and connecting. Um, we have next generation client standards curriculum that we work with. Um, and we support the teachers before and after the programs integrate and support them in the classrooms. Um, we recently paired up with, uh, the Jane Goodall Institute Youth Program, Roots and Shoots, um, who specifically is looking to support Malibu youth here to implement their own project. Uh, they would kind of be the first one in the area. Um, and so part of the grant that we're asking for will be in partnership with them to not only bring the students out to these local areas, but to then help them implement their own projects, um, that are very student-led. So, yeah, that's all I have to do to make good questions.
Is the grant money that you're requesting going to be earmarked for the Malibu-centric, um, project? Or is it going to some kind of general fund that could be used?
No, this is specific, this grant specifically would be for Malibu youth. So it would be for any of the teachers and students that have been on the school and high schools to kind of fill out their own project in the area, especially in the post-fires. They really want them to take ownership with their proper hands of the area.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I think we sent you a presentation, six hundred, uh, students. How many of those are from Malibu schools or this geographic area right here?
It would be a hundred percent from this area. We, we seek other grant funding. Um, where, we have a very small amount of money that comes from property tax. It's pretty minimal. Um, otherwise we operate like a nonprofit. So every payment we're doing is grant-funded. So this specific grant would be for Malibu youth.
And are you part of the state parks operation, natural resources? Who, who are you?
No, Resource Conservation District. So it's a special district, like a school district or a water district. So we're a service-based organization that has a small footprint in Santa Monica Mountains.
Thank you. How confident are you gonna have six, how confident are you that you'll have six hundred students from Malibu?
Oh, very confident. Yeah, we actually have some contacts that we've been working with over the years and a lot of teachers have actually brought their students out to our program. So we have direct contact with a lot of these teachers. Um, but I also will say that the project is scalable. So if you decide it's less.
That's gonna be my next question for you. What, what's the minimum that you need to be able to do this?
Uh, I think you could take it down to half if you really had to. Yeah, and we could reach three hundred students. So whatever you feel like is appropriate.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Just so everybody knows, nobody's gonna get, um, Arvada here. You just, you've got a million dollar, uh, request, two hundred thousand dollars to work with. Somebody's gonna have to give.
Okay, who's next?
Ellen Shane.
I'll come after.
Hi. So you know me. Ellen Shane, uh, the Emily Shane Foundation. And we have two divisions. I'm gonna speak on behalf of my division. She'll speak after on his. I, um, created and founded the SEA, Sea Program, Successful Educational Achievement. In twenty twelve, we started with three students here in Malibu and one mentor tutor. And we've grown significantly over the years in part thanks to your support from the city to twelve sites across L.A. And serving just about twelve hundred kids to date. Uh, this year we served eighty children. Ten of those children were here in Malibu. Um, our program is a unique and very comprehensive educational initiative. Middle school's a critical time. It's often make or break. If a kid is failing and struggling, it's a bad time that it's best and easiest to help them get on track, even if they're way below grade level and not understanding something. Because we deal with an underserved community, we only support those who couldn't afford the help. Uh, they're often dealing with other challenges. So, uh, it's a one-on-one, as I said, and it's intensive. We are at a very difficult point right now because of the fires, our funding that we counted on for so long and that helped sustain us has been pulled. Um, I'm in the process of dealing with that now. We have to let a staff member go. And I'm hoping that we can sustain, even if we have to pare down, even if we have to make some tweaks and changes. I'm hoping that with the city's support, we can sustain our work. After twelve years, it's been my passion. Why? Not just because it's in Emily's memory. I see the results. It's life-changing for these kids and often their families. Um, often these families cannot be involved or help their children, either they don't have the educational ability, uh, they don't have the time, it's a single parent working several jobs, et cetera. And so we come in and we really help these kids, not only to improve academically, but there's an entire mentorship component that really helps them with their own, either turning things around if they're on a negative track and/or just helping them feel empowered and capable. They are capable. They just haven't had the right help. So that's kind of the bottom line of what I wanted to share.
I know the request is for thirty-five thousand. I don't hear it from the other side.
Yes.
Right. It's two.
So my part is for the educational part, whatever. It's about a thousand dollars for kids, just so you know.
And how many, how many children do you have this, are you?
Ten were in Malibu this year. It varies every year.
These are Malibu kids, right?
Though ten are, are a hundred percent Malibu kids, yes. This, this past year, just you can remember.
So these are two subparts of one entity, right?
Yes.
How are you going to deal with money given for one purpose versus money given for another purpose?
We have two separate bank accounts and two separate accounts so that money isn't commingled if it's dedicated to the safety, um, driving initiative versus the education initiative.
It's earmarked with it?
Pardon me?
It's earmarked.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah.
It's separate accounts.
Any other questions?
What?
Separate account?
Yes, separate.
Michelle King.
I hate going after it all.
Just it. Get used to it.
So, w- we've started a new division called Driving Change. And, um, we're s- it started here, it starts here in Malibu. Uh, the program's Twenty-One Miles Road Rules, uh, obviously because of Malibu. Teen drivers are nearly three times more likely to be in fatal crashes than experienced drivers. Here in Malibu, our teens face even greater risks. PCH, narrow lanes, colliding curves, steep drop-offs, creating some of California's most dangerous driving conditions. Add speeding and all the other issues we have out of canyon, canyon roads, teen inexperienced, and we have a perfect storm for tragedy. Traditional drivers' education isn't working. Boring lectures don't prepare teens for PCH's unique hazardous, uh, environment. That, that's why our new division, Driving Change, is developing Twenty-One Miles Road Rules. An educational driving game, teens, sorry, games teens will actually want to play. Think Inverse Grand Theft Auto, rewarding safe driving through consequence, consequence-based gameplay. How this helps Malibu by making teens statistically more likely to survive driving on PCH. Continuing coaching on our most dangerous roads through telematics, creating safe roads for all families and potentially reducing insurance costs. We're working with the California Office of Traffic Safety, John Hopkins University, to ensure this proven safety intervention. The grant will be crucial in completing the development. We're teaching Malibu teens to come home safely on our most dangerous road. Technology create, created distracted driving. Now we're using technology to save lives. You know, I'm very much about all this. Ellen has her passion with the Sea Program. I have my passion with trying to figure out how we save lives on PCH, as you all well know.
When you first described this, this program years, a couple of years ago to me now.
Yes.
I had the impression, perhaps wrong, that it was not a not-for-profit endeavor. Has, is the ownership, all the intellectual property or anything of that owned by this not-for-profit?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Originally it wasn't.
Oh, it is now?
No, it wasn't.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So I wasn't under the wrong impression, but it's?
No, you weren't.
Thank you. Makes a big difference to what we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, Francesca and Sean up next.
How you guys doing?
Francesca McCaffrey. I'm the Executive Director of the Children's Life Saving Foundation.
Sean McCaffrey is the Program Director for the Children's Life Saving Foundation.
And we're here to request, um, our grant, requested fifty-five hundred dollars for our, uh, CLS Coastal Eco Mariners. CLS Coastal Eco Mariners Surf Camp program. This program has served over twenty thousand underserved youth from Los Angeles. It's conducted at Zuma Beach. We collaborate, we've actually collaborated with Maryland. I've never met a person before. Her educators, actually, we hired them to, as is RCD's mission, we really wanted to not just provide a really incredible therapeutic surf experience, but really allow them to become future stewards, especially right now after the fires and what's going on. We've also done field trips in Malibu as part of this program. And it's just, what can I say? You know, guys, especially after this past weekend, our kids just need as much healing and fun and recreational education. We provide the programs for free and yeah, we've been in operation since ninety-three. This program has been going on for about...
Since two thousand and six.
Yeah, since two thousand and six. And I think that's pretty much it.
And we wanna thank you guys for your continued support. And we commend all of you guys for all your amazing work that you guys do in Malibu. Thank you so much.
Any questions? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott?
Hi, so my name is Scott Hostell and I'm with the Malibu Friends of Music. And we've been providing concerts and music education in Malibu since, well, formally since two thousand and seven, but really beginning in two thousand and two. And we're asking for five thousand dollars to support not only our ongoing visiting artists in the summertime. My wife Maria and I run this and we don't take any salary and our family contributes. So it's, it's a labor of love for the community. And we are expanding this year some of our outreach to students and part of it has to do with the fires and the isolation that we've had. Some people, kids that normally would be traveling other places for lessons or advice, you know, couldn't drive to Santa Monica, you know, kind of things. Well, all the closures were happening. So we've kind of stepped into the public schools and I've been meeting with the main ensemble members, or excuse me, the directors at the high school and kind of coordinating mentorship. We kind of have gotten to the point in our course where we've been involved in music and media, classical music production, all kinds of things that students these days are interested in. And, and we feel that just in general, educational, even some colleges don't really understand the business. So we're kind of reaching out to students who are interested in furthering their careers in music and art and media arts, especially as it relates to music. So it's an expansion of things we did in the past. In the past, we did things with youth symphonies and ensembles and we still offer those kind of things, but we're trying to, you know, step in and share our, I guess, cumulative experience with students. So the concerts will continue, we have guest artists coming in primarily in the summer. One interesting thing is that we have, the audiences have changed since the fires and, but for, for the better in some ways for us. We have, we always had an old guard and now it seems like maybe people who can't or couldn't get out were starting to coming to our performance events. So that's about it.
Scott, what would the grant be like this year?
Five thousand. Okay, thanks a lot.
Just for you, and part of this is so everybody can hear the pitch. I wanna make sure you know what we have in the books and stuff like. Where do you hold the concerts and what's the percentage or number of people from Malibu that you say attend the concert and are students?
So, well, very briefly, my wife's mother bought property here in the nineteen forties when it first opened. And she and my wife built a house specifically, I mean, we live in it, but it's built specifically for the performance of music. And I would say, I would say eighty-five to ninety percent of the people that come to the concerts are from Malibu, but we have attracted people from other places over the years.
How about the kids, the students that are performing?
The students don't really perform. We do collaborate with students, but we're more about outreach educationally to the students. The programs that we present, except for with a handful of younger performers, are professional, they're professional concerts. And we offer them, we have a donation basis that nobody's required, so we don't sell tickets, we make reservations.
Dean Wenner?
Sorry, when I come asking for money, I'm usually dressed a little better, but maybe it fits with the new brand. So Dean Wenner, mechanical engineer, grew up on the East Coast, moved to Houston with my engineering construction firm at the time. Worked for a private family out of Beaumont, but we always did a lot of work here on the West Coast. Lover of the area, became a homeowner in twenty nineteen, Big Rock Beach. My home was one of the ones destroyed. So what I've been working on and what we're here today to talk about is I formed a nonprofit called Mission Urbana Malibu. Please forgive the name, we came up with it 'cause some others didn't work. Basically, everything rebuilds. What it seeded from is my own experiences and my two neighbors next to me, 'cause we have an integral foundation, putting together a program on how to get back in the house quickly, cost-effectively and safely. It's led to a lot of sharing with the neighbors and it's gotten a lot of momentum from there. So the idea came to my mind with the help of some other partners about putting together a nonprofit so we could spin this up in a big way to not only do right by the immediate neighborhood, but people all throughout the burn area affected. So roughly, I think my numbers are right, seven hundred and ninety-eight impacted, both commercial and residential. We have reached out to people relative to the other fires, Franklin, Broad and Woolsey that are involved in the team that I pulled together. So the idea is to ultimately help bridge the gap for people that are uninsured, underinsured, and to help give them a helping hand to move things along. Not to force anything on anybody. If people want help, we will be an opportunity for them to come talk to and we will do everything to be able to help. What the money is about is to have some credibility and really get after it. We need a meeting place, I want to take out some office space where people can come and go, we can set up a little bit of a war room, have an area to work and plan. I've reached out to some major players in the private sector who are gonna help with some funding. They're also gonna put their hands in the game relative to helping with some construction activities, maybe some legal help, bridging with bankers and insurance and property values. Basically, a cradle-to-grave assistance program to help amongst what everybody else is trying to do, to help pull things together to get significantly good results for the community.
I know you're relatively new, did you get Chicago One C three yet?
I did. I asked Parker for an extension, assuming we wouldn't get it, I jumped through hoops and it's one of our first benchmark milestones. I got the AG to approve it in less than thirty-six hours. Still waiting on the IRS exemption paperwork, but I should have that soon.
Have you got the letter of initial determination?
Yes.
Okay.
I think I included it in the package.
You may have, I just...
All right. What's, what's the four hundred thousand dollar salary and benefits for?
What I'm hoping to do, so there's none right now, right? What I'm hoping to do is spin this up in a big way so that we can have some people on staff to get paid and bridge, 'cause everybody has a day job. Some of that may include myself at some point. Right now, it does not. All of the money that I've requested thus far will be entirely be for infrastructure of the business, pulling up a lease to be able to have them, a website, brochure information. What I ultimately want to roll into, Bruce, to answer your question a bit more directly, is when I spin it up, I want the ability to have some stipends for people, if necessary, to help in that regard. Because what I'm hopeful of, and please don't laugh, I've been involved with some nonprofit boards in the past and doing what I do for a living, I'm hopeful we can get this thing not only into the tens of millions, but hundreds of millions. So I want to be able to have the proper infrastructure in place to make it work well.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Denise DeGarmo?
So I am here, and I already talked to Parker, speaking on behalf of the Malibu Foundation, but also Big Heart Ranch, because they had an emergency and couldn't come. I support them as you guys should know. So hopefully I can have a little extra time, otherwise I'll talk really fast. With regards to the Malibu Foundation, I'm here because we have created an educational program to be embedded into the curriculum of Malibu's public studies from elementary school, junior high and high school. We have the support of the schools, we have the support of the Malibu Ed Foundation, the PTA, the Sharks. And it's a program that's bringing the strength and power of a kid's voice back into their control, where they are gonna be learning, implementing nature-based solutions to create community resiliency and resiliency against disasters, i.e. slides, floods, fire. We do work with RCD. We launched our first program at Santa Monica College. It was the first city college in the country to implement into the curriculum nature-based solutions to mitigate all of the impact of everything we are very well aware of. I believe that our children, as was evidenced recently and years of my dad being a teacher here and my own teaching experience, they need to believe they matter. They need a hands-on chance to participate as a community member with an impact that is not gonna just be, I was sad in the classroom, I took a test. Their whole worlds have been broken apart, their social strata, their ability, it used to be like their team was part of their family, or their, the art, or the computer tech. Everybody, the people lost their homes, they had to move. We did a project at the Community Plaza, I saw Bruce there a lot, and got very familiar with the voice of our kids. And I believe this project will give them an opportunity to take an act that will help protect their community, that will allow the overlap of our senior center and you guys and their classroom to literally learn from the ground up how to collect seeds, how to germinate seeds, and then how to plant. The first urban forest in Malibu, that their hands in conjunction with everybody in Malibu. The Malibu Foundation has done well with community resiliency. We bring in a thousand, you know, and a thousand people that show up to help plant an area that has lost biodiversity. Paramount Ranch, our partnership there, and Indi-let Ranch is a new partnership. And I think that this program can make an enormous difference. We did it with a Shakespeare and children program. I've been for three years here. It overlaps into all the sciences, literacy, reading. The end of the program will become the planting of the microforest and simultaneously, as a celebration at the end, the kids will, on their own, pick up book, reenact it, an environmental book, there's one called The Overstory, it was on Walden Pond. Whichever book they choose to pick, they will write it, produce it and act it as a theater production at the very end. We did this very successfully years ago where, you know, a parent who knows how to sew did, you know, did the costumes with the kids. A parent who knew production helped with the production. And it was a wonderful community experience. And that's what we wanna do. We've got the teachers agreeing, we've got the schools agreeing, and really need the support and involvement of the city. You guys are amazing. So that's the Malibu Foundation.
Tell us about Big Heart Ranch.
Do you have questions about this program?
Well, I do, but let's...
Oh, Big Heart Ranch, okay, okay. As you guys know, my love of animals, my growing up on Point Dume, and you guys got the large animal sling, it's been used successfully, by the way, several times. I was a participant at one of them, so thank you. Big Heart Ranch was able, we, actually, Malibu Foundation collaborated with Big Heart Ranch in Animal Wellness Day for people impacted by the recent fires. We had seventy-five people. We were able to find a lunch whereby the, the money we raised was able to actually pay. We used Howdy's and we used the new, I forgot where we stopped, it's called Market, to provide the food as a way to, everybody got fed, everybody had animal wellness. It was very successful. We did it also after the Woodsley fire, you may remember. The money Big Heart Ranch is asking for is to put on a series of this through Alpha here of the wellness for Malibu people. It's always successful, animals heal us, you know? And our, and obviously not just our children, but all of us. You know, we're coming out of the shock now. It's like back-to-back fires and then landslides and then the road is closed and we've become an island. So, and Big Heart Ranch, in my opinion, is a piece of history for Malibu. It's kinda like the pier. You know, those of us like me at my age moved here and part of the attraction was animals. It's where my parents built on Point Dume. So those are the two hats I'm wearing today.
Question on the Malibu Foundation. It's been around since Woolsey Fire or before.
Yes, we were born out of it, yes.
This is a new, new feature you guys are doing, which is...
In the last, formally, in the last year and a half since I've been a participant with them, let's just say, the educational aspect and implementation utilized urban forestry as a means to resiliency both for community and for against disasters has been something that we didn't create. I mean, we didn't create it, but we, it was started by a scientist, his last name is Mia Locky. We actually have one at the Wildlife Crossing, there's one in River Park. But it was a partnership that we put at various demo sites to study scientifically and see the impact within the Santa Monica Mountains and ultimately for Malibu. So we partnered with Calabasas at Deansa Park. We partnered with Los Virginus Water District. We partnered with Santa Monica College, which is the first educational foray into, let's see what happens if it's actually implemented into the curriculum rather than just an extracurricular activity. How does that impact the project and the community at whole? And it's been tremendously successful. RCD, we did partner with one of their scientists, their environmentalists on that project, who is still involved in terms of the study part and creating the documentation as to soil depth and water retention, heat mitigation, et cetera, et cetera. And now, because I love Malibu and you know me, it's bringing it back to the Malibu schools and reempowering our kids. Does that answer that?
It does. Just, can you give me a range, how many, how many people are involved at Big Heart and other foundations?
Me separately?
Yeah.
Big Heart reaches within Malibu, hundreds of people, if that's what you're asking. Because, you know, it's, and again, after Woodsley. The programming at, at Big Heart became Malibu-centric. So many people were impacted, children having, I'll tell you a story recently that just happened with a family.
I appreciate, I, we have to let everyone have some time.
Oh, I'm just trying to answer.
Yeah, just, I'm just looking for numbers.
Oh, okay. Hundreds at Big Heart. And community outreach, thousands with Malibu Foundations, eco-centric, not in the schools, and then all of the students at Santa Monica College are benefiting. And this will impact every class at our schools.
Thank you. Are you, are you a director or officer of Malibu Foundation?
Mm-hmm.
Why didn't they, why didn't somebody from...
I don't know, I guess, 'cause I'm, I'm, I am part of Malibu Foundation. I'm the community outreach, my title is community outreach coordinator. I love the word.
You've got a new CEO, I think, or...
Yeah, we do.
I thought he would have come and made the request.
I, I think that he felt as he was brand new, perhaps he was, he feels like he's treading, like trying to catch up.
Okay.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Segali?
And with your permission, I'm here on behalf of the Aurelia Foundation Creative Steps Program, but also Hand in Hand. Rabbi Marcello is not able to be here, so you're, okay, but then I'll make it, re-provoke. Thank you again for past support for the Aurelia Foundation Creative Steps Program. We're a program that supports adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We're a community integration program, so we support people that would not be able to access the community for activities, for jobs, for all those kinds of things without the support of support staff. We tend to support some of the most vulnerable people that are impacted by their developmental disability, both in the Creative Steps Program and in our Hand in Hand Program. and in our Hand in Hand Program with Creative Steps. We have several families who have adults that are in our program who were impacted by the Malibu fires, who've lost homes or were displaced. We continually bring a group of our, the adults in our program, the clients that we support and our staff into Malibu at least once a week. We participate in the Shemesh Farms Program. We participate in programs at Pepperdine that we've worked to cultivate, a nice collaboration. And even during the fires, when it was a little more challenging, we have continued to bring a group of people, as many as 30 people, 40 people sometimes, into Malibu on a weekly basis. And obviously, once we're here, we support the local businesses. But we feel that maintaining, especially for the 10 or so adults that grew up in Malibu, went to the Malibu schools, and many of them were in my classroom when I taught the special ed class at Malibu High School, we just feel that maintaining that connection to Malibu, to the community, and supporting the Malibu businesses is really critical. So, for Creative Steps, that's what we do. During the week, we bring in groups of adults with disabilities and their staff into Malibu to participate in a variety of different programs. So, we are asking, this year we're asking for $2,000, a little less than we've asked for in the past, in consideration of the, you know, needs of the people that have been affected by the fires. Hand in Hand is a program, and I am one of the co-founders and co-directors of the Hand in Hand Program. I'm the founder and a director of the Creative Steps Program, which is the Aurelia Foundation, it's our 501(c)(3) name. Hand in Hand is also, it's a afternoon program that pairs people with disabilities, teens, adults, even some elementary school kids, and people, non-disabled peers for social activities, recreational activities. We also, we do a once-a-month in-person. We've done several events this past year at Pepperdine. But we do things in the community in person. But we, and we also do Zoom activities, especially when we have natural disasters. So, Zoom activities have been really helpful. So, we are asking for the continued support for both of those programs.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you have a relationship with the Shalom Institute?
Yes, yes, that's the Shemesh Farms Program. I actually was instrumental in helping get that up and running as well, the Shemesh Farms. I don't know if anybody is here.
They have their own requests.
Oh, hi, they have their own requests. But we are connected with them, and that's one of the activities that we do weekly. Yes.
Aurelia is an entity unto itself, I understand what they do.
Yes.
Am I correct that Hand in Hand is the Malibu Jewish Center in Chicago? It's not, it's a program within Santa?
It is, that's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay, thanks. Attention.
Next speaker, Eli Metrus.
Hello, thank you for having us today. I'm here, my name is Eli. I'm here on behalf of the Malibu Coast Surf Lifesaving Association. We represent the lifeguards that work for the state parks from El Matador up through Point Magoo. A couple of my coworkers and friends here are going to cover more specifics about our grant request, but I wanted to provide a little context as to why we're asking you guys for money as to, instead of the state. First off, we are a separate entity from the state. The state provides for the general lifeguarding organization. We supply a lot of gear and equipment for our lifeguards themselves. But over, as many of you know, over the past decade or so, it's been somewhat biblical of, we lost our headquarters in 2014 to Hurricane Marie, 2018 with Woolsey. We, our new headquarters burned down, including all of our gear that we use for training, which is a centerpiece of our grant request today. And as we tried to build that back up, we hit COVID, that knocked us back down. And we started to try to build again, but in the last five years, the state budget has been cut about 50%, and a lot of our life, they haven't hired as many lifeguards. And the state isn't as willing to help provide us with some of the tools we need. As I said, we are separate, but when they provided other supplies, we could divert funds more specifically to gear for our guards. So, I come from having spent 15 years with the MCSLA. We officially became a nonprofit in 2017, but I've been with them for a significant time and was the president for several years, and spent years trying to push the state to help us, help fund us, help hire more guards, help provide the equipment we need, and was repeatedly shut down for various reasons, mostly cuts to the state general fund, which about 60, between 50 and 60% in the last decade, has been cut from the state parks. So, this grant would allow us to help train our guards. But not only that, as that when I was younger, I would also train with, I went to Malibu High School and grew up here, and I would train with our older water pole players and older friends who were lifeguards, and I got to know our beaches better. It inspired me to more become a lifeguard. So, it's not just our lifeguards, but it does affect the broader community as a whole. On top of that, our lifeguards need this training, because when it comes down and we hit the water, we lose fins all the time, we lose sunglasses all the time. It's part of the job, and if we don't have that equipment, literal lives could be lost. So, if our guards lose fins on rescue, extra fins, we can get them to them right away, and they can be back on the beach ready to go. We don't have that supplies right now. So, when our guards lose stuff, it's significant. And we are lifeguards, we don't, we're not rolling in the dough personally as lifeguards. So, it's hard to constantly be buying $80 fins, wetsuits that cost hundreds of dollars, and all the other equipment we need that the state does not provide us. So, we would just like to request any help from you guys we can get. We would appreciate it greatly. As I said, I've got some coworkers here who are going to help provide more specifics as to the grant, but I just wanted to provide a little bit of context as to why we're here asking you guys for money today. Any questions?
The timing was perfect. Usually, you know, we see county lifeguards, sorry, you guys are part of the state. And how many lifeguards are basically along the Malibu beach from Santa Monica to...
I can't speak for exact, not for county, we are a separate entity. Oh, we have about between 120, 130 guards.
They cover this area?
They cover from Point, from, well, technically, Point Dume, we are, but we don't, staff guards down there. From El Matador Beach up to Point Magoo. Yeah, we have about 120 guards, depending on how many rookies we hire every year. And so, we would be looking to supply about all of them, especially a lot of our older guards are lacking in equipment, since over time, things fall apart and, yeah.
Most of that's in Ventura, no?
Huh?
Most of that is in Ventura County?
About half of it is Ventura County, but our primary beaches are, well, all of the beaches are important. But Leo Carrillo, the North Beach and South Beach at Leo Carrillo, and especially with the shutdowns down south, our pocket beaches, El Matador, La Piedra, El Pescador, have been seeing like heavily increased traffic, and we've been trying to staff more guards down there. So, yes, we are half in Ventura County, but our other half operates LA County, Malibu.
And Leo Carrillo is just outside Malibu, right?
No, it's, it's, or it's, it might be on corporate, I think.
Right, it's the county.
Yeah.
LA County, Mount Malibu.
Okay, yeah. Yes, thank you.
Chance Lawson.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Chance Lawson, I've been California State Parks Lifeguard for 17 years. I'm originally from Agora Hills, but I went to school in Malibu. My dad's a schoolteacher there, you might know him by the coach. Became a lifeguard in 2009, and basically, I'm here with all my other colleagues on behalf of the Malibu Coast Lifesaving Association. We're requesting essential pieces of rescue equipment, wetsuits, sunglasses, and fins, and these may seem like simple items, but they are critical to our safety and success of ocean rescues. Wetsuits, yes, they keep us warm during morning shifts and cold water rescues, but they do much more. They protect us from hypothermia of rocks and exhaustion during long operations. On this coastline, rescues involve everything from boating accidents, people being swept off the rocks, or traffic collisions where people in their vehicles are ejected off the Pacific Coast Highway and down into the rocks and water. One rescue I'll never forget happened to me just past County Line Beach. Three people were swept off the rocks. We responded with their rescue team, and on arrival, a woman who had drowned but was still floating, and two others were submerged in the rocks, under the water. The surf was big and the conditions were dangerous. That rescue took over an hour. In moments like that, a wetsuit isn't just helpful, it's essential for the safety and endurance of lifeguards. Next, there are swim fins in powerful surf and strong currents. Speed saves lives and fins give lifeguards a major advantage, helping us reach victims faster with less fatigue. And on our rugged Malibu coast line, every second counts. I once responded to a rescue at Point Magoo State Park where a swimmer was seconds from being slammed into the rocks, and without fins, I wouldn't have been able to reach him in time. And this outcome could have been tragic. Lastly, sunglasses, I mean, we all have to wear them. The glare here in Malibu gets pretty bad on the beach. Sunglasses cut off the ocean sunlight and the glare and make it nearly impossible to spot somebody in distress. But the high polarized quality sunglasses, they can cut through the glare protector eyes from the harsh UV rays, and they're not just a luxury, but they're also a lifesaving tool. And after a long shift without eye protection, I've experienced how difficult it can be in safe focus and alert, and good sunglasses are nearly, or good sunglasses help us see clearly and sharp. I've already had one eye surgery from Torigiums, and that's a specific cause of ocean glare, looking at your eyes, and I'm going to be having another one at the end of the summer. It's costly, and if I just have some really nice sunglasses, I won't, I could minimize that. And then, these items directly impact us on how quickly and safely we can respond. As a California State Parks Lifeguard and a member of the MCSLA, we're not here just to serve the beaches in Malibu, but we also serve Pacific Coast Highway, remote areas of the Santa Monica Mountains, trailheads and campgrounds. And we're often, first on scene, this gear will help us respond to the highest quality level preparedness, and with your support, we can do our lifeguarding job effectively and safely.
Are there other speakers from your region?
Yes, sir.
One of you, can you address, maybe someone that's going to speak, because we have limited time, but maybe somebody can address where else your funding is coming from.
Okay, I'll have somebody else speak.
Zachary Condon.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm actually, I'm the third speaker from MCSLA here to support our grant, but our grant presenter has not talked about it yet. Would you like to hear from them first?
They can go last, but just want to make sure somebody covers the question that I just had.
Okay, okay. So, hello everyone, my name is Dr. Zachary Condon. I started lifeguarding 18 years ago with the Point Magoo State Lifeguards and Leo Carrillo State Lifeguards. When I began, some of the bosses who I worked for had been around for a very long time. They'd been at the job for 20 or 30 years. One of them founded the lifeguard service at Point Magoo in Leo Carrillo. And one of them had actually been around so long that women weren't allowed to lifeguard when we started. I will say that the guidance and mentorship that they all provided was exceptional, one that always took into account the longevity of our career. I say this because I left in 2018, I became a doctor. I was a practicing family doctor in Western Washington, as well as a delivery clinician in our hospital, excuse me. I've come back this year though with obvious resolve and determination. However, I see that we're in need of something from you all. The way I feel about lifeguarding, the way that the people next to me and in front of me feel about it is not shared universally, and most importantly, is not shared by the people that pay for our service. Where our organization is is a shadow of its former self. We're asked to provide the same service yet given a small fraction of the tools to do so. Malibu is busier than I've ever seen it. Our beaches are busier, PCH is a bit of a carnival, and every day, more and more people discover the national and state park backcountry. I'm seeing that we are asked to do more and given less, and so I hope that you will consider our proposal. It's neither extravagant or extreme, but will allow us to do what I saw us do 18 years ago, and that's provide a safe visit for our patrons from Malibu. Again, thank you for listening and having us. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Colin Murphy.
Good afternoon. My name is Colin Murphy. I'm here also on behalf of the Malibu Coast Surf Lifesaving Association. I stand here today with a paper that I wrote, gone over a bunch of times for all of you. First and foremost, I'm born and raised here in Malibu, and I am so proud to say that. And I want to thank you guys for sitting here today. I know that throughout all my life, people like you have been in these seats for a reason and for people like me, and for people that are sitting over there. That being stated, the MCSLA would not come here today and stand around these people that are talking about the fires that we've gone through, or helping kids learn how to drive in our community. I've had friends that I've lost due to driving on our PCH. I've lost homes in the Woolsey Fire. So, I speak from the heart, and I'm not even going to read from my paper. I just want to show how truly important this is to me. Growing up in Malibu, I've always visited these beaches. And Mr. Silverstein, I saw your concern when you think about, well, it's not really the city of Malibu. And I want to say that it might not technically be at some places, but I want to tell you that our community, it is the city of Malibu. And if we lost someone in the city of Malibu at our beaches, none of us would feel, we would just, it'd be terrible, right? Could be my mom, could be my brother, and that's how we treat the community. Now, not only that, the city of Malibu, but also the people that come around it, right? How people from Agora Hills or elsewhere that visit. But how does that look on a reflection of the city of Malibu if there's a loss of a life there? And I don't mean that in any term, however, it would be the state parks, right? But we're requesting this because we care, and we show up today because we care just as much as you guys do in the community. And that's an impact to us. When I talk about numbers and the MCSLA as a whole, our beaches on May 24th, just about three weeks ago, alone, saw 5,500 people, of which I knew many that were from Malibu. I visited those beaches all the time, I had friends that I was surfing with in Malibu, at El Matador, city of Malibu, right there. And then the following day, we got over 6,000 patrons that visited our beaches. The reason we come here today and request this grant for our equipment is because, I know we talk about sunglasses or things like that, and they seem so silly or monotonous. But it really does make an impact, because if you're looking at the beach from a specific angle and you can't see a swimmer, or you can't see a child, that could be a live loss, excuse me, a life loss, and it's needed in order to provide the care that we do. That being stated, though, like I'm coming back to this, is these numbers aren't just statistics, people showing up to our beaches, but they're real lives, they're real humans, right? They're members of our community in Malibu. And I just want to reiterate the fact that we would not show up and ask for a grant if we didn't think it was pertinent and necessary in order to provide. We wouldn't want to take from anyone else that's sitting here if we didn't think it was necessary. Other than that, just want to say thank you, and that if the full amount is not awarded, we're completely understanding of that. And there's one more point I wanted to make. Oh, working as a paramedic, on my office, when I'm not working alongside a nonprofit or as an ocean lifeguard, I understand that equipment's necessary, right? I can run any call as a paramedic, and I wouldn't show up here asking for lifeguard equipment if I didn't think we weren't needing. So, thank you so much for your time, and thank everyone here for the things that you do, because that means a lot to me growing up in Malibu and being alongside you guys today. So, thank you.
Who's going to...
Our co-president, sir, Giselle, yeah, she'll be questioning.
Just make sure you lose the question.
Absolutely.
You should live in Malibu, you could learn from it.
She's not a mess, I feel like we can move it around.
I think it'd be good to...
Yeah? Giselle?
Good afternoon. My name is Giselle Holani, I'm the co-president at MCSLA. Thank you so much for having us here today. We so appreciate you all taking your time, and like Colin said, we're honestly so honored to be amongst such amazing organizations. I've lived in Malibu for 21 years now, I'm so proud, and I'm so happy to be here and here to address any questions that you guys might have with MCSLA.
Bruce, you got to, you have a question.
And also, you getting your funding from?
Our funding comes solely from member contributions and donations. We receive no external funding. All of our members will pay dues, and that's about it. And if anyone else offers a larger sum or a larger donation, that is the sole location of our funding.
How many members?
We have about 130. Like we said, our lifeguards fluctuate between 120 to 130 each season, depending on how many rookies we get.
So, lifeguards are the members?
Yes.
About, how much should it be?
We ask for 20, like it was made earlier. The point is, we don't get paid the most, so we often allow that to be at the discretion of our members, whatever they can offer.
Any other grants from anyone else?
None.
Have you applied for them?
We have not, up until this year, we have been able to support our own, but we come... Up until this year, we have been able to support our own, but we come here today seeking your help.
I will say that one thing I've noticed in the last couple of years, state parks, state operations that we think are visitor friendly, don't seem to have much money behind them. Adamson House, State Parks is on the list here. You guys are here. We've got others that have come forward. It's disturbing that we're not putting more money at state level, in the county level, in the, what is visitor support.
We completely agree that the state should be helping fund these needs. Unfortunately, they are not and MCSLA is a separate entity. We work in tangent with the state and we help support the lifeguards, but we do not operate as a part of the state and we're actually here to help offset some of those needs that the state is failing to meet, which is why we come to this city.
Yeah, I would say I haven't paid a lot of attention about who's who in terms of lifeguards, whether it's the county or state. Because I look at the Zuma headquarters, they've got, they've got all kinds of equipment down there. Is that prevalent at the state beaches as well?
We do have jet fees. We have less robust amount of equipment and funding. The county is supported through the fire department, which is entirely a difference. We are not, and like it was mentioned earlier, the state is often the first to have its funding cut. And that affects the agencies like our lifeguards, which is why MCSLA often steps in to help support.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My computer died, so it will be loud over here. Heather Lindgren.
Why you ran away?
Typing too fast.
Who's that?
Heather.
How many more are left here?
This is number seventeen out of twenty-six.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Heather Henderson. I'm the Marine Program Manager at California Wildlife Center. And actually, really quick, it is absolutely amazing. So many of the organizations here are actually individuals. We work directly with, through our, my daily work, so it's just very cool to actually put faces to names. So I'm the California Wildlife Center Marine Program Manager and we're the organization that responds to distressed marine animals along the Malibu beaches. So first of course, I'd like to thank the city of Malibu for reviewing our grant application and inviting me here today. Their crest helps fund support for response and rescue. Efforts for over four hundred injured, ill, early weaned and deceased marine animals. We're the only agency permitted by NOAA to respond to marine mammals in Malibu. And we do this at no cost to the public. So CWC commenced marine mammal rescue in nineteen ninety-eight and we've continued working with the city of Malibu while serving residents and the native wildlife populations. As our ocean health and environment struggles, the increased frequency of and severity of naturally occurring stranding events continues to intensify. In 2025, marine mammal response numbers have already surpassed twenty-six of our twenty-seven years in operation. We've performed three hundred and one marine mammal responses and over a hundred marine bird responses. And we of course have six more months in the calendar year. This was primarily due to the record-setting harmful algal bloom, which is thankfully wrapping up. Seventy-two adult California sea lions suffering the effects of the neurotoxins in this bloom were rescued during late winter and early spring. And to put this in perspective, the most we had historically rescued for adult California sea lions in the calendar year was thirty-one. And generally, on an annual basis, is thirteen through seventeen. So the timing is also not ideal as it was right when we see high numbers of northern alpha and seal pups ailing along our beaches. As a nonprofit, we do not receive any sustained government support. Instead rely on the generosity of donors to reach our four hundred and sixty thousand dollar annual budget. We're honored to partner with the city of Malibu and are thankful for the genuine and continued support over the years for our marine mammal response and rescue program to enhance the safety and beauty of this coastal paradise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Casey.
Hello. Pardon me.
Yeah, you know, on the list.
I had on the list.
I'm surprised you weren't on the list.
Well, it's a fascinating meeting to come to, so I did want to check in. I'm Casey Ernest. I am the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club. We did not submit a grant this year, but I wanted to share and I thought it was important to share why. As oftentimes, the Boys and Girls Club gets a large portion of the grant funding that's available, which then in turn allows us to serve the community for which we are here to serve. Our children, youth and in this current scenario, through our disaster relief services. We believe this year that we're going to meet our budget through outside support, so we're grateful for that. So we did not participate, but I wanted everyone to know that. We will probably come back in years to come. But the Red Cross is very interested in continuing to support our disaster relief services as well as some other funders that believe in the work that we're doing here in the fire space as well as in the youth serving space. I also wanted to share, just so everyone's aware, that the fire relief services have provided services for sixteen hundred fire survivors in person. We've distributed two million dollars worth of brand new tangible items to fire survivors. That's all been donated. We hope to be open for another year at least. We've increased our mental health services for the community as well as for our public schools. We are providing free memberships to all families who lost their homes so that their children can come to our program. Whether they were a Palisades resident and they're now in Malibu or they're a Malibu resident, we want to give them a space to send their children. Excuse me. And we're, so that's our priority and that's what we're doing and I wanted everyone to know that. And I'm saying this because I want to work alongside the organizations that have the same commitment to the community. So what I come to you, leadership here today is please prioritize organizations that are continuing towards the essence of what makes Malibu, Malibu. Care, connectedness, safety, preparedness, right? All the things, whether it's the arts or education, but that it's going back to Malibu more than ever. You guys, the world out there does not want to take care of this town. And if you are in education anything and you are not first going to the Boys and Girls Club or the Malibu Education Foundation to find out if what you have to offer is what is needed in our schools right now, please do that before coming and asking for money. Because Karen's here, she's in the school every day, I'm in the school every day. We work together, we work with our principals. We need more resources, but we need you to partner with us. So that's what I'm here to say and thank you so much.
Hey, wait a minute. So, one, I'm really glad you're making the budget this year.
Me too.
Two, the work, I told you personally before, the work that they're doing for people who were impacted by the fire is amazing. I'm great, great to hear that it's going to continue. Community Labor Exchange is providing volunteer service. Can you put a price tag on the labor you pursued?
Oh my gosh. So since we opened the doors to the DRC on January twenty-third, every day that we're open, they provide two to five volunteers from the Labor Exchange that come and work for us. They set up our canopies, they move boxes around. You know, for example, one day we received twenty thousand units of bedding, right? That needed to be moved around. Bruce is in there. I'm moving boxes around, like there's a lot to do. So I don't have a current value, but it's, you know, we're trying to support Oscar with some grants also so he then can stipend some of his people. But I would say, you know, at this point, it's probably somewhere in the thirty thousand dollar range in the human. If you were working on a, on a minimum, you know, hourly.
And how much have you granted them?
I think we've granted them about fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's very helpful, appreciate that.
Karen Friedman.
Hello, I'm Karen Friedman. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I am here on behalf of Shemish Farms, which is a unique social enterprise that is growing a lot more than just herbs. We are cultivating opportunity, inclusion and community resilience right here in Malibu. Shemish Farms was founded in two thousand thirteen as an initiative of Shalom Institute with the mission of providing meaningful employment, community and programming for adults with diverse abilities. In two thousand eighteen, the Woolsey Fire destroyed our original farm along with the rest of Shalom Institute's property. In the wake of that devastation, our Malibu community was here for us. And first, we were welcomed by the Malibu Jewish Center and synagogue. And in fall of two thousand twenty-three, we moved to our current home, which is at the Malibu United Methodist Church. Thanks to the city's partnership, Shemish has not only survived, but we have grown a lot in the last two years. Today, we proudly support over a hundred and twenty farm fellows, which are adults with diverse abilities, engage more than two hundred active volunteers and collaborate with fifteen community partners. Our pre-program serves as, serves adults with disabilities across Los Angeles, offering purpose, skill building, skill building and deep sense of belonging. But we can't do it alone. Our program is offered at no cost to our participants and we rely entirely on grants and donations to fund our operations and staffing. As we grow to a rising demand, we are seeking twenty-five thousand dollars from the city of Malibu to help launch a local paid internship program to help us manage our current growth. This grant would allow us to do four things. Provide paid internships for Malibu residents and anyone else who might be affected from the recent fires. Support our internal growth in critical areas such as farming, production, sales, inventory, program coordination and marketing. Build a mutual beneficial bridge between Malibu and our nonprofit rooted, a nonprofit that's rooted in community and inclusion. And support the maintenance of our corner garden that we planted specifically for the feeding ministry at the Malibu United Methodist Church. This is more than just a grant, it's a partnership. One that empowers local residents, supports a one-of-a-kind organization and helps Malibu model what it means to invest in purpose-driven inclusive employment. We're honored to be a part of Malibu's story and with your support, we'll continue to grow a brighter, more connected future together. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, just a quick question. You talk about the people that work on farms. You're physically in Malibu with the farm, right?
So, yeah, we're, do you want me to explain the farm to you?
I'm sorry.
Do you want me to explain our farm, how our farm works a little bit?
Yeah, just real quick.
Sure. So we are at the Methodist, the Malibu Methodist Church. We are a herb farm. We grow twenty-five different herbs. It's a very sustainable farm, twenty-two hydroponic towers which run daily. And then we have thirteen above ground garden beds. We also have a corner garden that is specifically for the feeding ministry.
Yeah, I know, we're totally, I was always wondering about that, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's very relaxing to listen to.
And just on the sustainability factor, and a lot of people are very concerned about sustainability here in Malibu. We have saved or reserved more than four to fifty thousand gallons of water by using hydroponic towers. And we do our own composting, which is part of our farming practices and part of our educational programming every week. And we save about four thousand pounds of food every, for the last, last year, we saved about four thousand pounds of food from going to garbage, you know, going to landfill. And it actually is great food for our farm, so we, let's keep feeding our farm.
Thank you.
Okay. Karen Al Harden.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and thanks for the time on Monday as well to bring an update on Malibu Education Foundation. For those of you I don't know, I'm Karen Al Harden. I'm the founding executive director of Malibu Education Foundation and we fund vital staff and staff programs across all four Malibu public schools. We launched in January of last year. And for the past two school years, we have funded four instructional aides and arts teacher in each elementary school, the launch and growth of middle school athletics, staffing for arts, athletics, academic and community engagement support in the secondary schools. And your support has enabled us to take critical steps towards long-term sustainability. And I want to confirm today that we remain firmly on track with our three-year plan that we outlined at launch. And we're asking for phase three C funding support today. That said, we're coming off a uniquely difficult year in Malibu. Between the delayed 501(c)(3) approval and eight percent increase in instructional aid costs and the disruptive impact of three major fires, we've had to adapt in real time. So we tightened our operations, we deferred staffing and leaned on other education foundations for best practices, all to keep our grant commitments to Malibu's schools while staying true to the long-term goal, which is becoming self-funding, self-sustaining by 2027. But our need is greater than ever. If you don't know, students have lost more than twenty days of instruction this year due to the fires across all grades. And whether or not Malibu ultimately separates from Santa Monica School District and becomes an independent district, the gap is real and urgent and the need for support for our students is there. So our funding request is about preserving momentum, protecting our core staff at our schools and ensuring the city's investment in Malibu public education continues to bear fruit. So we're asking for one more year of steady support so we can complete the bill, launch major donor and tent pole campaigns and finish what we started together. And I do want to just note that the PTAs once again held off on their grant requests in support of our efforts and our request to you today. So thank you for your partnership and do you have any questions?
Yeah, as you know, I've been a very active follower of what you're doing. And I believe there was three years of funding that we talked about when we first started.
Yes.
This is year three.
Yes.
And supposed to step down.
Yes.
What was, what was the original proposal?
The original proposal was one sixty-five for this year. We're asking for three fifteen, which is the same as last year. And the reason is, we lost four months of fundraising because of the fires. We lost five days during our big tent pole event at the tree lot in December because of a fire. And then there was another fire that started a year that paused things a bit. So we hit delays, but that said, we have plans and we have a, we have an intent to make next year a transition year and get back on track.
Karen, did we make the prior grants through this program or did we make them as a special grant?
They were, they were outside this program. So this is the first year it went through this program.
Why is that?
Well, I reached out to Joe and Parker and the recommendation was that we submit as part of, as part of this. But it was budgeted outside of the general fund grant and hopefully that remains the case so that.
We haven't spoken yet, but I suspect that's what we're going to do. I suspect so too. Totally good last time. Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Just so everybody knows, under the Brown Act, you can't have two council members or can't have. A majority. Majority that can make a decision, meet and discuss on any particular topic. Because there's only two of us in this A and F, Administration of Finance Committee, we can't talk about anything in advance. So whatever we talk about, you're going to hear it first, right here from us, and you're going to hear it first. So that's the reason why you may think, well, why didn't these guys talk about some of this before? Well, the answer is, we're not permitted to. So it's all public meetings, all part of the public agenda, so.
Yeah, Brown Act keeps things transparent, but it also makes things very inefficient.
There's a lot of times you wish, those of you who's involved in business, a lot of times you wish you could just call somebody into a conference room and get it worked out. You can't do that. We're trying to be, especially, I know the two of us are always trying to be Brown Act compliant and even on the council meetings, we sit next to each other. And we try not to have any violations with our best efforts. I'm sure we do something wrong sometime, but we do try and live by the rules. Who's next? Who's next?
Dr. Mal.
Hi guys, I'm here to speak on behalf of Malibu Film Society. Want to thank you and the rest of the council for providing waivers and an agreement to absorb the cost of the facility rental and staffing for the events that we have done here at the city over the last year. We've had events that we have given away several hundred free tickets to residents of Malibu. And we've had almost two hundred residents of Malibu sign up for this program. Unfortunately, because of the Woolsey Fire, because of the. Unfortunately, because of the Woolsey fire, because of the Palisades fire, Woolsey's on my mind because Malibu Boys and Girls Club is here, and they gave us a grant after we lost our house. So after that fire happened, it was really important to us to raise money that would go in part towards fire relief as administered by the Malibu Boys and Girls Club. We also wanted to help save at least one Malibu business, and that was ALO Restaurant, because chef and owner Antonio Alessi lost his house here in Malibu. His employees lost a month's worth of work, and we decided that we would start doing our annual Oscar party there. We raised fourteen thousand five hundred dollars for ALO that night. Here, since we have had the opportunity to have everybody attend that event separately, we raised almost seventy-five hundred dollars for the Boys and Girls Club. We're not just about movies, we use movies as a way to build community. And unfortunately, because of everything that we have done this year, we have burned through half of our cash reserves, we've lost almost twenty-five thousand dollars. We do this another year and we're out. We just can't afford to do this. We don't have another place to screen in Malibu, Malibu's our first name. We want to continue to be here, we would love to continue the program here at City Hall. We set up the dinner and movie nights at ALO. Antonio told us after the last one that we helped them turn the corner, and they are now cash flow positive for the first one this year. We helped Adamson House Foundation raise eighty-five hundred dollars several years ago when we did our season opener on the lawn at Adamson House. We've worked with Children's Life Saving Fund, providing discounted services for projection at their fundraising events. We've done events with Malibu Friends of Music. We've done events with the Malibu Foundation where we raised seventy-five hundred for Woolsey Fire in that first year after the fire had happened. So this is about building community. We create opportunities for people to come together for fundraising events. We had one couple meet and get married at one of our schools, not at the same time. But they, you know, it's something that, we're doing a lot of free stuff, but it's unsustainable for us without a grant, and that's why we're asking for this funding.
Just out of curiosity, now that we've lost the Regency Theater in Agoura Hills and Palisades Theater is closed for now, is this your only screening location?
We're now screening with Regency at their Calabasas location. And we'll ask about it separately for the council, but if there's any way to provide bus service for the older people who live here in Malibu, they can't come. Yeah, so that's a separate issue.
I know that Caruso wants to carry that down, but...
We're hoping that's gonna be delayed. That was scheduled to take place at the beginning of the year, but given everything that happened in the Palisades, we think his attention is focused elsewhere, I think.
So your application, you noted, and you just talked about the past screenings here.
Yes.
And you put a three thousand dollar event cost in here, is that for the events here?
In general, all of our events cost us, separate from venue rental fees, they cost us close to three thousand dollars. Free concessions that we're giving away, free line service, we do have to pay staff. I now get paid, I'm working sixteen hundred dollars a year, sixteen hundred dollars a year.
So the events that we waive the fees for and provide the facilities, it still costs you three thousand dollars on top of that to have that event?
Yes, including film licensing, which can be anywhere up to six hundred dollars. And the last one we did cost us four fifty for the money. Thanks.
Please, Scott.
Thank you.
Robert Brinkman?
Good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Robert Brinkman, and I'm here on behalf of the Malibu Marlins Swim Club, a five oh one C three nonprofit organization built right here in Malibu by and for this community. In just under two years, the Marlins have become the city's official aquatic swimmer, serving local swimmers through a wide range of programs. Some offered in partnership with the city and some directly. We serve swimmers from five-year-olds just learning technique to teenagers training for college-level competition to adults in their forties, sixties, and even eighties and beyond. What makes the Marlins different, and what I want to emphasize today, is that this program isn't driven by outside interests or profit, it's governed by the people who participate in it. Malibu parents, swimmers, and volunteers. Every family is a stakeholder and has a voice that matters. The result is a club rooted in accountability, transparency, and responsiveness. Board meetings are open, decisions are shared, and the community continues to shape how the club evolves. Our coaches aren't just former athletes and trained educators, they're mentors. They make swimming something kids love. I've seen kids excited to get in the pool at six, three, and one, and I've seen them stay long after their events at meets to cheer on their teammates. That's not just about sport, it's about connection. The Marlins are a broad participation club. This isn't just a program for elite athletes. If a child wants to swim in Division One, we can help them get there. But if they're swimming for joy, health, or confidence, we make sure that they belong too. Malibu is a small community, and naturally, there's a limit to how many top-level athletes it will produce. But we also care deeply about kids with special needs and everyone who finds happiness in the water, whether they bring home medals or not. We've also supported the city's goal in meaningful ways, by offering support for lifeguard training, helping independent study PE students meet their requirements, and keeping fees affordable even as costs rise. When fires or high winds closed the pool, we refunded families, paid our staff, and stood by our commitments. That's because we're not in this for short-term gain, we're here for the long-term strength of Malibu's swim community. This grant would allow us to build on that foundation. It would help us expand access, sustain our coaching team, invest in safety training, and reduce financial barriers for local families. We've already raised nearly ten thousand dollars through grassroots fundraising and business sponsorships, and we're just getting started. But it's not cheap to run a club. Everyone, except the coaches' works were free, and even they help by making sacrifices when needed. Just having a reputable accounting firm prepare the financial statements for this application costs nearly a thousand dollars. And when the pool was closed due to the fires, we paid our coaches, and we were ready to resume the moment the doors reopened because our swimmers count on us. At its core, the Malibu Marlins Swim Club is a community success story. It's inclusive, it's resilient, and it's working. With your support, we can ensure that Malibu's aquatics future stays local, strong, and community-wide. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, how many kids, how many Malibu residents participate?
It varies a little bit, it's usually more in the summer, less in the winter, but it's basically between sixty and ninety right now. And as you know, we took over for the previous club, and the program, you know, has been affected by fires and people moving away. I'm asking for a little bit more than you've historically given the old club, just because of the increased costs.
What had you given?
You have given ten thousand to the C both in the past.
You didn't get a grant last year. You did not have a grant last year?
No, because the requirement is to have been in business for one year, and last year we were just under that mark.
Kat Healy?
Good afternoon, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking on behalf of the Malibu Monarch Project, and we've extended our mission to focus on the preservation of Malibu's unique habitats. Every decision a resident makes, no matter how small, affects the Malibu ecosystem. Our goal is to promote conservation and restoration of nature and to clearly demonstrate how Malibu residents can live in harmony with the unique environment tucked between the Santa Monica Mountains and the Pacific coast. Malibu Monarch Project proposes to publish a forty-page book entitled, "Malibu Living in Harmony with Nature", illustrated with text, drawings, photographs, maps, and charts, which will foster understanding, collaboration, conservation, and hopefully a sense of honor. To produce and distribute the book will cost around twenty-five thousand. The book will show new and existing residents, visitors, developers, architects, planners, a way to embrace the city's mission and vision statement, to live lightly on the land and to preserve Malibu's natural environment and small-town atmosphere for future generations. The book will be provided for free to anyone who wishes a copy, and with the cooperation of the realtors, it will be provided to new property owners at the Esco closings. Our goal is to provide every resident with a copy and have residents in their neighborhoods live in tune with nature. This is absolutely necessary with the increasing vulnerability in the face of climate change and other environmental challenges. Thank you. Any questions?
Well, last year we gave you twenty-five hundred dollars, and I'm just wondering how the program went this last year.
Last year, it was thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred, okay.
Yeah, and we weren't able to do everything we wanted to do, but we did trading parks that were environmental, about the animals of Floridian in the Santa Monica Mountains. And on the back, it explained what each animal was, the size of the color, and things like that. And we're in the process of distributing them right now. What we couldn't do is the poster because we didn't have enough money. But someone gave us a grant that enabled us to produce the poster on the pollinators and the plants that are like in the Santa Monica Mountains.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Brian Ambry?
My kind of habit is a repeat of what I've said to this group probably fifteen years ago, and that is your matrix. You should have columns and sheets, and I think I see one, that categorizes what is it that's trying to be accomplished with money from our city in this private space. So I'll repeat what I've said before. Local genesis, did whatever the program proposed to you start here? Is it from people in Malibu? Is it from a labor of love? Do not start off with seed money to see if maybe startup funds, if we get money, we'll try it, see if it works. Something that's already working that has commitment, that provides a local benefit to Malibu and primarily Malibu, not also Malibu. And that the organization is thrifty, and they're tight with their funding because they know funding is limited, especially this year. But the amount of funds achieves a significant function to the multiple beneficiaries of the program. It's not to help one, two, or three people maybe, but it needs to be broader-based. And that the amount of funds might bridge a short-term funding gap for which the organization might just go under in a history of providing prior service and a needed ongoing service to the city. If this is necessary just to keep an organization alive because of a disaster. If it's not likely that the funding could come from other sources, or if it's not primarily a religious-based organization that could, should have other funding sources available to it, that this is just not an augmentation of other funding sources. And that it's not duplicate any type of a government program or compete with another grant applicant or another similar entity. I noticed there were several submissions that asked for transportation money. Well, we have transportation funds that we don't use. We can do that internally as a city, we should get coordinated about that. But the transportation, we necessarily need to bring people to Malibu to take care of a program. We really need to take care of our own people first right now. That this not be a make-work project. There's training, there's courses, we have Santa Monica College now, schools have their place. And that we not repeat fund an application or an applicant that hasn't met the milestone when they were here last year, saying what they were gonna do with the money, or they're asking for the same amount of money they asked for last year, but they don't have anything to show for it. So, is my time is up?
Yes.
Thank you, Mark. Okay.
Sonia Kavronova?
I didn't mean that. I didn't mean that toward you, sorry. Oh, it's all right.
Hello. Thank you so much for allowing me the time to speak with you. I come as someone who lends my time to an organization called the Occult Peace Foundation. I'm an opera singer, and I have the great honor to perform for this community on occasion when I'm here in the community. The Occult Peace Foundation's mission has been to support like-minded foundations who are in trouble or in need of finance in terms of bringing concerts to support those foundations, so we may find friends in this room who may need our help and assistance. But this past fire has affected as much like the Woolsey Fire did. It burned down the foundation headquarters, and of course, my business also suffered damage from this fire. And we have many, many friends. And so immediately, the first thing that I thought was we have to do another initiative from the Occult Peace Foundation to bring concerts, to bring healing to people, to raise funds. And FEMA reached out to us, discovering that we were doing these concerts. And also, the Habitat for Humanity reached out to us. And we find ourselves now in a circumstance where we want to continue doing these wonderful concerts. Now, I'm not the primary person to speak with, the foundation's president is here. I had probably hoped he would speak first, but as a person from a truly genuinely heartfelt position, someone who has seen the healing that's happened in this room, I've got to perform for people in this room who have been deeply affected by the fires from Woolsey and these fires that we've just recently experienced, all of the schools that have burnt down. I'm working right now for the foundation to build a really big concert that would help the schools that have been damaged in our community. And of course, in Malibu, we've taken in kids that lost their schools. So I'm particularly moved by these kinds of important things that we've gone through. So I suppose it's the continued initiative to support our community through a truly artistic component. My ability is just to heal with my voice, so I'm not the best person to talk about this. But I can talk about the foundation's need to continue. I have felt and experienced what has happened when we brought these concerts, most recently, to Malibu Music, and of course, here to this wonderful facility here, and to the Raffi Lounge, and we continue. My first event was, as soon as I could possibly make one, I brought thirty hula dancers and my rockumental orchestra to try to raise funds, and we had some success with that. So I'd like to see that continue, that healing is extremely important for people's hearts, for their confidence in the fact that the community is going nowhere, that we have real community. Doesn't matter what's burned to the ground, we stand here, our hearts are here. And our musical healing, if we can do so, I feel is really important. That's all I have to say, but I'm sure our president can enlighten you further.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker, Eduardo del Senor?
My name is Eduardo del Senor, and thanks for the opportunity. To expand on what Sonia had presented, I would like to add that we were invited to be part of a long-term recovery group that includes also FEMA, Habitat for Humanity, Red Cross, Gen, Catholic Charities. There are other organizations that have been added at times. This happened about a week ago, Saturday. So we already did three concerts. We are working specifically to help the Habitat for Humanity to rebuild houses for people that cannot rebuild them, you know, making it a little easier for them in this community and in the Palisades. And also, we're helping the Malibu business community in association with the facility Palisades Malibu Chairman of Commerce. So basically, all the monies that are coming from our performances, they go split evenly to both, to those, those areas for help. And what we are requesting right now is just to allow us to have the infrastructure to keep going since we lost our place with the Palisades fires. We find ourselves in a very vulnerable place, which I don't mind... So it's an open thing and we're going to keep going, you know, so that's, we're requesting just support for this.
Did I understand you to say that half of the proceeds are going to Habitat for Humanity and the other half to Malibu Chamber of Commerce?
Well, they will distribute to the businesses that are in, that are in need. They know, they have more knowledge than me.
Right, right. You're taking after whatever your expenses are, they're fifty percent of Habitat?
No, no, the expenses are covered by grants. All the money that comes in goes to us too.
Okay. Where's Habitat for Humanity building homes?
They're focusing on mobile home communities in the areas that were affected. That's the main area of operation. They did it on Sunnyvale Springs during the Woolsey fires. They also helped in Paradise, Abner, California. And now they're focusing on their three mobile home communities in the Palisades between Mescal and Sunset. One of those was the one that we had a place.
And do you know what the Chamber of Commerce is doing with the money that they're getting?
Well, we have to, we have to get together with them to organize a specific avenue to make sure that the money is well administered. So the money that we have raised is in the account right now. And this way, the money for Habitat for Humanity has been submitted.
How much was that, by the way?
Pardon me?
How much was that?
It wasn't much. It was about a thousand dollars for Habitat and there is another, you know, as much, a little bit.
One thing that concerned me about your application, city staff reports that in your application you didn't have a budget, didn't have financial statements, didn't list the board of directors, didn't have an organization chart.
Well, I got the, I got the announcement to apply to this and I was out of town and I had all the resources that I had on me and I was in Santa Fe, New Mexico, and I barely made it to the deadline of the time. I mean, it's all available, you know, but if it's needed, I can still provide. There's no problem.
All right.
You want to take a quick break or you want to pull it off?
I'm fine, I'll keep going.
Okay. Go.
Why don't you go first?
First off, there is no question that every person's got an application here that's got a story that benefits Malibu in some way and is deserving of our consideration. That makes it even harder to have this job. Some people have talked about this being the best job that we have. I can tell you this is the hardest job I have because we have to decide who gets money and who doesn't, and who we support and who we don't. Ryan, I think, had a good set of criteria there for us to consider, you know, how does this affect Malibu? How do we make this better for Malibu? How do we take the money that's been brought to the table by the city of Malibu and use it for the benefit of all that are involved in our city and even our visitors? You know, we're responsible for the visitors that come to our city as well. It's not just looking out for ourselves. Everybody that comes to our city is our guest, so we have to make sure we take care of our city. I'd like to propose maybe some structure here and as I said earlier, Bruce and I haven't talked, so you're watching the conversation take place even now. There's two grants that probably should be in the general fund as opposed to out of this. One is for the community brigade. Last year we gave them a hundred thousand dollars and I think that donation provided their training in October, which got put to use over and over again, starting in November with the Blood Fire, then the Franklin Fire, and the Palisades Fire. And I think the amount of volunteer time that they put forward was, what, six thousand hours just in the Palisades Fire. A huge commitment, a bunch of volunteers. If you look at return on investment, there's no way to measure that. The city, the city and the community got so much out of it. So I'd like to take the Fire Brigade number out of the grant budget, that'd be a hundred thousand dollars. The Malibu Education Foundation is something really dear, I think, to all of us here. This is, this is a pivot point for the city. That's the reason why we funded it as well as we did the last two years and Karen and the staff have made a good argument for it. Casey, it's not just the fact that Boys and Girls supports all the other places here in town, they give credit where it's due. They're not here at the table this year, so they did it on purpose. Casey and I had a conversation about this. She basically gave up her money so we'd have more money to give to other people. And that's just the story of the Boys and Girls Club. It continues to give even when they're not asking for any money. So thank you for that. We also don't have the PTAs here today. That's because the Malibu Education Foundation has assumed that responsibility. And we've given various PTAs, many at the high school level and the elementary school levels, the middle school level. So we've, in the past, have given money out for that. So that makes more money available. So I'd like to take the Malibu Education Foundation grant out of this and have it in the general fund as well. I know the city manager is looking at the budget right now and he's just going, where are you going to get this?
To be clear, when you say, first of all, when you say out, you mean take it off the table from this?
Right.
Not take it out of, okay. But also, no presumption on our part as to what the full city council will do with any of those requests. I mean, they're all appropriate requests to be made and to be considered by the city council, but the fact that we say we're going to take it off of this, and I agree with those two, I have two others. The fact that we take it out of this and don't consider it doesn't mean it will automatically be granted by the city council in whole or in part. It just means that's a broader discussion to be decided for purposes of the general fund, of the budget, not this grant fund.
Yeah, and along that line, we only make recommendations to the council. They will be coming up, I think on the twenty-third is when this probably comes in, is what I'm suspecting. And we'll have our recommendations that says this is what our grants are. They generally follow it, but it's up to, it's up to the other three members of the council up here, they have to confirm this. We'll make our recommendation, but that's as far as it goes.
So I can agree right now that we can just not consider those two for now?
All right.
Okay. The other two that I think fall in the same, and I think the applicants pretty much showed that they belong in a different category by the amount that they've requested are the Friends of Malibu Urgent Care. And I guess you're going to be silent on that anyway. I think that that's a broader discussion for the city council as a general matter because of what, because of who they are and what they do, and also because of the amount that they're requesting. So I'd like to take them out of this consideration altogether, put them on an agenda at some point for a city council discussion of whether the city is going to fund the Friends of Malibu Urgent Care or not, and if so, to what extent. And I would say the same thing for Dean's new organization for the Mission Nirvana Malibu. I think that's a completely different concept than anything that we traditionally looked at in this body. It's a large sum of money that's being requested and I think that to the extent you're going to make that request, that ought to go to the city council as a separate item. It's part of the rebuild effort. It may or may not be granted, I have no way of knowing, but I don't think that's something that we should be doing here today. So you agree with those two?
I definitely do, and I would like to make a comment about Dean's concept. I think it's an excellent concept, but it's a startup. And if you look at generally, our criteria here is you've got to be an operating entity and show us that you've got a board of directors and support and so forth. Startups, probably not something we really want to be looking at here, and I think for those reasons, it's probably most important to take the seat of the city council. And as far as Malibu Urgent Cures go, I'm not going to say a word.
If they come here with a request for five or ten or fifteen thousand dollars, I'm not sure where it'd land, but that would be something that I think appropriately consider here. But since they're asking for a hundred thousand dollars, I think that that's something that ought to go to the city council as a separate item for its consideration. And it'll also make it for people that can talk about it rather than just one out of two.
Because I got a tracking system here too. And yes, Ryan, there is, there's a couple.
Give other general comments before we get into the specifics of what to do?
Yeah, I think we also can pretty well say some things on here are a given. And let me, and I'm not going to put anybody on the spot with this, but let me just rattle off a few that I think we just, I consider as being a done deal. I think the state parks is a done deal. When I say done, I say we need to approve it as we say.
City parks? You mean the Addison House?
No, California State Parks and the Addison House. I think we also, the Malibu Little League, Malibu Marlins, and the Chumash Foundation are probably, let's say the Chumash, but I think some of these are probably just a given because they need our criteria so strongly, at least my criteria for this. Bruce, over to you.
You want to comment on that? So with the exception of California State Parks, I agree that a grant is a given for the others identified. I'm not sure depending on where we come out on how the money is, how much money's available, whether each of the ones you said should get the full amount they're asking for, they may. I think we need to see how much there is available for everyone that we think is worthy, but those are worthy. Last year we divided on the state parks. And I'm still where I was last year with the Guse. I don't believe that the city of Malibu should be supporting the state of California. I think it's the other way around. And, you know, so we can leave a placeholder, we can agree on, if you want to agree on the full amount, I'll agree on the full amount, as far as, we're not recommending it be awarded, leave it at, end up awarding a hundred eighty-five thousand, a hundred, whatever the number is. And that way it's available if the city council wants to adopt it, but I can't in good faith recommend that the city council make an award of one penny to the state of California.
We're like our previous election.
Exactly where we were last year. Last year they're asking for about a hundred dollars if I remember correctly. It's a lot more money.
It was a lot, I don't think it was as much.
It was more, but in any event, they sent a ranger or two to the aspect.
Let's see, last year California State Parks asked for forty-nine thousand.
Okay, yeah, it was a much bigger request. But again, I, you know, we, everyone here pays a substantial amount of state income tax and property tax and that money gets, goes to the state a lot of it. And the state should be helping us, not the other way around.
I don't disagree. My only comment on that is that when State Parks is trying to do something specific for our area, whether it's working on Melvin Creek or whatever, they don't have, the funding doesn't get done, so there's a chance for us to put some extra points on the table. But I agree, let's, we can put that in brackets and leave that up to the council.
So are there other general comments?
That's it on the general. How about you?
The only other, so I'll just say, I really liked Ryan's presentation. I often do. I thought it was well thought through and there's only one of his criteria that I disagree with, so just to say it, which is the, these grants should be to bridge something that would otherwise be going under. I don't believe that's a necessity. I think that if somebody has a, is doing good for Malibu and they're coming out of Malibu and they, and we think it's a valuable service for the community, I think it's worthy to fund.
I had a caveat.
Anyway. But otherwise, I really liked the list. It was more extensive than the one I was going to provide, but just the most important things for me are that it's by and for Malibu, comes from here, occurs here, it's for the benefit of our community, and it's, there are tax dollars that are paying for this. That's the, and that's the reason, and I don't mean to sound heartless, but that when I say, is it in the city of Malibu, that's why I ask, because the city residents are the ones who are funding what we're going to grant. And I think that for the most part, we ought to be granting money within the city to protect and benefit the city residents. I also, I, the numbers that are requested by some, to me, I actually give greater consideration to organizations that come in here with a small helping hand request, because I think that's the point of these grants. They should be a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars for the most part, sometimes maybe five or ten. When you start getting over that, I start saying to myself, that's not fair to the community, to the wide community of me, because we only have so much to grant and when someone asks for fifty thousand dollars or seventy-five thousand dollars, it's basically saying, I don't believe the other organizations in town are worthy of getting things, because we can't possibly fund everyone that's worthy or even close to when anyone's asking for a, or not, I've said that before. It's also if you really need that much, that you thought from your needs and that you really need that much, that ought to be some request you want to make to the city council as a, as a special request, because it's not what this general grant fund is for, in my opinion. So I actually, I think people, organizations that come in here and ask for somewhere between one and five or ten thousand dollars are being respectful to the community and to the other organizations that have to share the burdens and the need. Separate from the state being a problem for me, I raised this last year and I ultimately agree we should make some contributions, but it troubles me when we have religious institutions that are coming here asking for grants because I believe strongly in the separation of church and state. And I know that it doesn't technically violate the constitution when they're treated the same as everyone else. But, and I also have no problem when someone who's affiliated with a religious institution such as the Aurelia Foundation comes in for a request because they're, have a separate from the religious institution function. But two of our requests are from plant, projects within a religious institution. And that's like saying, give money to the synagogue or give money to the church. It troubles me to give our residents tax dollars to a religious institution. But I want to hear from Doug on that, I guess, because I did put some placeholder amounts, but I'm just not sure whether they're appropriate recipients. Not that they're not appropriate, that they don't provide valuable services, but I'm just not sure they're appropriate recipients of government dollars.
I agree with you about the separation of church and state, but I think these are arms-length enough to where it looks like it's a standalone to a great degree. And we're certainly not funding the entire operation. And when you see my numbers on these, we're giving them help, not support, I guess that's what we put.
And that's right about my proposals too, but the more I thought of that, money's fungible. I mean, if you give three thousand dollars to a program within a religious institution, you're just saving them three thousand dollars from something they're doing for their congregation in general. And so that, that concept troubles me. It's not like they form, I think they ought to form a charitable organization, the religious institution can form it and have a special function and have a special bank account, you know, have a bank account and a board and all that. Then they're like any other organization, but it seems to me if it's just a program within an organization, it's really not the program that we're granting the money to, we're granting the money to the organization.
Yeah, although I think, I believe the Shalom Institute has moved from only one religious location, they're over at the National Church.
Shalom Institute is not a religious organization.
No, I know, I'm just saying.
They're not, they're not a place where people go to worship.
Right, I'm just saying it's a, if that was one of the three you're talking about.
No, it's not. It's not. There's a division of Abad, there's a division of, not division, there's a program within Abad, there's a program within the.
Again, again, hand in hand.
Yeah. So those are my general, general thoughts.
All right, well, let's.
So let's go down the list?
Go down the list.
And the other thing I'll say generally is, I've got some zeros here. I've got a lot of lower numbers that are requested, substantially lower in some instances. It's not because you're not worthy, it's because we have only so much money to contribute to so many people that are asking for so much. And, you know, world's getting tougher, people are asking for a lot more than they've asked for in the past. I understand why. So I'm not going to each, I'm not going to go through the, this is a great organization, I feel like it's really worthwhile, however, that's just a, you know, you should assume that's a preamble to every one of these numbers.
And I'm the same way, and I will say this, one of the things that we have reserves for in the city is when things are tough, that's when we need to dip into your reserves, kind of like going on your batteries, lights and all. But that's not an infinite amount of money, but this is the time when you want to reach in a little bit and try and help working. I know the city manager is over here going, dipping into the reserves all over the place, so.
So since I'm the senior member in this, I get the reserve, the right to go last on these, so I'm going to put you on the side.
You go first on each of them.
That's just a, you know, you should assume that's a preamble to every one of these numbers.
And I'm the same way, and I will say this, one of the things that we have reserves for in the city is when things are tough, that's when we need to dip into your reserves. Kind of like going on your batteries when lights are out. But that's not an infinite amount of money, but this is a time when you want to reach in a little bit and try and help working. I know the city manager is over here going, dipping into the reserves all over the place, so.
So since I'm the senior member in this, I get the reserve, the right to go left on these, so I'm going to put you on the side.
Last, last year, I was the senior.
Right. It's only been two days.
I, well, quantification here, we may not always agree on everything, but we do try and run a collegial consensus built operation. And Bruce and I go see out of island many things, but we do know that, you know, everybody has a legitimate opinion, and we try to do the best we can to work it out. Unless, either the national government, there is a middle ground, and we try and make sure you find it.
So what we're gonna do is, we're just gonna, we're gonna each put a number, we're gonna each offer our number for each of these in order, and then to the extent that we have discrepancies, and we will, we're gonna do horse trading, basically.
Right. Since I'm first, eight-one-eight consultant, I have zero.
I do too.
A call to peace, zero.
I had a question mark. After hearing today what it's for, I'm actually inclined to go for zero, because I don't view it as valid.
Addison House, ten thousand, that's what they asked.
I put seven point five, but to the extent that when we add up the numbers, there's money left over, to fill in the delta, I fill in the delta.
So that, for Cynthia, that's a. If you can have two columns, I have two columns, I have proposed, I have this case. So I think it's proposed at seventy-five hundred, but if you have the money, ten thousand.
Oh, you want it that way? All right.
However, however they can keep track of it. Arula Foundation, I have two thousand.
I had three, what did they request?
Uh, three.
Let's keep it at two and three for now, and we'll discuss where to go with it down.
California's, Big Heart Ranch, I have twenty-five hundred.
I had five. So, I mean, I think Cynthia, actually, it'd be great if you're able to keep a column for me, a column for Doug, and then we'll just move them around, we'll see what.
That's how we have it. So there's a Bruce column, a Doug column, and then file recommendation.
Okay, cool.
Great.
And so for Big Heart Ranch, five thousand dollars for their proposal?
Doug's two point five, and I'm five.
Yep.
California State Parks, I have fourteen.
I have a zero.
With a asterisk.
Although, let's just agree, if you want, to just say we're only gonna award one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, and the city council will know that there's fourteen thousand left. If they wish to do it for State Parks, or they can readjust it to other people if they want to do less or nothing.
Let's get down to the end and see how much we have.
Okay.
I have a point of order question.
No.
California Wildlife Center, I've got seventy-five hundred.
I can't do that kind of addition.
I have ten. I wrote.
I'll go with ten.
Sometimes I wrote twelve point five or something, I'm trying to read my writing. Oh. I would normally do ten, and I want ten to be the precedent normally, but I actually would be going to, oh, you're, you're lower?
Yeah, I'm seventy-five hundred.
Okay. If you'll do ten, I like ten, especially since the algae boom was a problem this year, and they occurred.
One question about, and I will tell you, I saw the biggest sea lion on the dock where I had my boat when I came back Sunday night. And I don't know how we're gonna move it until somebody decides to make a noise with a taser and push it in the water. But that's the biggest sea lion I've ever seen in my life, I don't know how you rescue those.
I've seen them show up and pick up seals, and it's really dangerous work, and it's really valuable.
This was the size of the car. It was, it was half the length of my boat, and I had, I had thirty.
How much did Doug?
My hat's off to you guys.
Children's life saving net.
Children's life saving, I have four thousand.
I have three. I'll go for one, that's not a bad.
Emily and Shane, they've asked for thirty-five, I can't think of a more worthy organization, but we just can't come up with thirty-five for them. Bruce, what do you have, do you have a suggestion?
I have five for SEA and ten for Twenty-One Miles.
I, I think that's probably a fair number. I've got, I've got some notes here, that's probably one of my notes. I'd be fine to go with fifteen.
But they need to divide it that way.
Yeah. Did you guys catch that, five and ten?
You just have a footnote on that.
Five for SEA?
Yeah.
And then ten for Twenty-One Miles?
Yeah. I was very pleased to hear that Michelle had contributed the intellectual property to the institution, because I wasn't going to give them anything otherwise.
On Experience Center, I have fifteen hundred dollars, that's what we gave them last year.
Same here.
Thanks, Malibu Urgent Care is a council item. GAN, Malibu, we gave them five thousand last year, I understand that they signed, what's your recommendation for that?
I put two point five.
And what about Hand in Hand? Because I think they are essentially.
I said two.
All right, I've got two on Hand in Hand, and I could be down to two point five.
Okay.
On the Community Brigade, we're gonna put that in the general fund, but that's a full, our recommendation, we pulled a request, we pulled a dollar.
I showed that.
On the Malibu Coast Fire Life Saving Association, I will tell you that I was a lifeguard in college, I worked hard early in college, but I was from Olympic Pool. And you guys are the NFL, and I was varsity high school. So that's the difference between the two. I cannot appreciate what you do more. I've put down twenty thousand.
I came in with a question mark, and listening to them and trying to make a decision on that was one of the hardest ones here. I think twenty for anyone is too much money on a grant program of this size. I can go for ten and leave a bracket for possibly more when we get to the end if we have it.
Okay, let's do, let's do ten and see where it comes out. I would have said, I have a soft spot, I think. All right, Malibu Labor Exchange.
Well, the speakers got me there.
Yes. Like I said, I, I have a vision, I envision everything you're talking about.
Can you stand?
It's not the same in Olympic Pool, but I cannot imagine the risk that you guys do. Malibu Community Labor Exchange, after hearing the presentation and so forth, I'm at ten.
Same here. If it weren't, I'll say if it weren't for the contribution to the Boys and Girls Club post-fire effort, I would have been at zero, because we have a separate item for the city for the Malibu Labor Exchange.
It's on the agenda.
I was not aware of that, and that's, I appreciate both of you for all that.
I agree. Casey, this is where you shine. I don't know what we do without the Boys and Girls Club. Malibu Education Foundation, that's being deferred to the general fund and the council. Malibu Film Society, I have eighteen thousand.
I'm gonna stick, I'm gonna go with ten for right now and wait and see where we are at the end.
Okay, let's, eighteen for me, ten for Bruce. Malibu Foundation, I, they've asked for fifty, there's not enough money to even begin to consider that much. I put down seventy-five hundred, they gave me five thousand last year.
I'm gonna explain this one, I put a zero down, and the reason I put a zero down is that there have been allegations of impropriety with the money. I don't give any credence to the allegations being true, but there also has no, there's no audit, there's no financial, there's no audited financial statement. I understand a lot of money has been run through that organization, and for them to come in here and ask for fifty thousand dollars, I think they ought to be providing an audited financial statement for that. And I'm hopeful that they'll do that going forward with their new management, but for right now, I can't justify awarding anything.
Okay. I was not aware of the concerns of financial issues. I'll go with, you wanna put zero?
I want to put zero, yeah.
I'll go with zero.
I think that's a larger discussion.
Yeah, that is, but I still think we can solve it here in Malibu.
Zero.
Malibu Friends of Music, five thousand's request, I agree with five thousand, that's what they asked.
Same here. And I would say, that's a poster child. That's found here, exists here, didn't ask for a lot of money, that's, and that's the way I think it ought to be. Come in here with a small request to do something that's, that is valuable, it's small, but it's valuable, and it's here, and emanated here, and I think that's exactly what we're here for.
Malibu Little League, fifteen asked, I have fifteen approved.
I'm fine with that.
Malibu Marlins, fourteen asked, fourteen approved.
I had ten because that's their prior mark. Let's, I'm gonna keep mine at ten, wait and see how much money we have left. Keep anything.
Fourteen for me, ten for Bruce. Malibu Monarch Project, I'm a little concerned, I'm concerned about publishing books as being our grand money score. I, I think it's great to work on the Malibu monarchs, but we gave them twenty-five hundred dollars last year, it didn't seem like it was.
Eighteen thirty-five hundred left.
Thirty-five hundred, sorry.
So what did you have there?
Somewhere, I had somewhere twenty-five hundred, thirty-five, and five thousand, just because that, I thought twenty-five hundred was what we gave last year.
I had twenty-five hundred?
I'll go with twenty-five hundred. Malibu Search and Rescue, that, that's truly a self-sustaining by donation organization. They need equipment for their new project, they've asked for twenty-one thousand, one forty-five. I'd like to give them the full amount if we have the money, but I don't know how much money you have.
I put ten as a placeholder.
Put me down for twenty, and put Bruce down for ten, and let's see how much we have to give him.
Neil's on wheels to me, seemed like another example of exactly what we're here for.
Yeah, I have, we gave him fifteen hundred last year, I have twenty-five hundred this year.
Well, I gave him the three, three point five request, but I can go for two point five.
Well, let's see how much money we have, let's put it twenty-five hundred, and let's see if we can go to a higher number. Mission Nirvana, Malibu, that's.
We're gonna wait.
We're gonna, we'll wait on that. Paradise Cove Garden. It sounds more like a social event than it did a. Anything else? I put down twenty-five hundred.
I put down a question mark, I was hoping somebody would come and explain it better.
It isn't, and I've got a, I've got a bracket and everything else.
What's, what's that for?
It looks like they're doing dinners and some other things for seniors in the community, and they're gonna expand it to the other point due.
All right, twenty-five hundred, but do you have to me come down if we don't have the money at the end?
That's a soft, that's a soft number for me. Poison Free Malibu, I can't think of anybody I like better, but I've got it down for five thousand. He asked for seven.
How much did you say?
He asked for seven, I put down five, that's what we gave him last year.
And I said five, but go seven if we have it left over.
Okay, I'm fair with that. Resource Conservation District, I just didn't know enough, we can't do the twenty-three-sixth, but I, I don't know, was a fair number for them, and I've got a big question mark on how much would you come up with?
I put five, and then after hearing the explanation of what they were and what they do, I put twelve point five if it's available.
Let's, let's go with ten and see if we can go to twelve.
I'm okay with that.
All right. Skin Divine Cosmetics, that's a zero.
You skipped Shalom.
Oh, Shalom, I'm sorry, I went in the wrong place. I had a finger on the spreadsheet. Shalom Institute, we gave you seventy-five hundred dollars last year. I'm thinking five, seventy-five hundred to ten thousand.
I wrote ten.
I'm fine with ten. Skin Divine Cosmetics, that's a zero.
For some reason, I put down two point five, was that, that was for the fire people?
Yeah, but it was cosmetics and things like that.
Yeah, well.
It was superficial.
You know, I thought it was superficial at first, and then I thought more about it and tried to figure out what a person who actually takes advantage of that would feel about it, and it's, it's, it's not superficial. It's actually, it's psychologically important.
What'd you have?
Two point five.
All right. And then the Chumash Foundation, they asked for ten, I give them ten.
There are a ten for the last one, was that two point five confirmed?
Yeah.
Yes. The cosmetics, two point five, and then the Chumash, ten thousand, what'd you put in?
I put five, but again, that's another one that I'm happy to increase if there's money, if we haven't hit two hundred.
Without asking for the grand total, I would show them one ninety-eight. If we do ten.
So we currently have allocated a hundred thousand seventeen, five hundred, and then you have eighty-two thousand five hundred left.
Oh, okay, good. Zamchi.
Well, hang on. I don't know, because I'm looking at my total. Let's go back down to the ones that are in question.
Wait, so what are the three column totals?
The Doug total was, what total?
Doug total.
One question, for the last one, the Chumash Foundation, was that agreed upon, or are we coming back to that?
I put down ten, Bruce was a five.
It sounds like we're gonna have funds, so go ahead and put a ten down for now.
So left, funds left are eighty-two thousand five hundred.
No, no, that, that, no, that could be, that's on the, we, what we go for, we do. What is, what is the total for Doug, what's the total for me, and what's the total for we agree on?
Oh, I see. Bruce, a hundred and sixty-one thousand, and Doug, two hundred and eight thousand.
Two hundred and what?
Eight.
Eighty-eight, okay.
All right, you're starting out.
And then the total for both of us that we were agreeing, any agreement on?
A hundred and eighteen five hundred.
Okay, so let's go down to the ones that we need to see here.
Well, first question is, what is the total number that we're going to be awarding? Because if it's two hundred and we don't award anything to the state, for, then, then, then there won't be anything available for the city council if it accepts the other numbers.
So one eighty-six ought to be the, maybe the number.
Why don't we, why don't we call it twelve point five as opposed to fourteen that would be available for them, if the city council wants to award them? Okay? So then, what we're shooting for as a total is one eighty-seven five, one eighty.
One eighty-seven five.
One eighty-seven five.
All right, can you maybe read off the ones that we have a disagreement on, and see where we can come up with? Which ones approach from this?
First one, Outidea Foundation.
And what were the numbers? I remember how.
It's between a two thousand or a three thousand, and they're asking for three thousand.
So you have a two down as the number that resulted in the lowest number?
Yes, that was Doug's recommendation.
I can go to three on that one, Doug.
I want to go to three, but I have the two.
Oh, you were the, I was the higher one, okay. I'm fine with keeping it at two, or maybe, two point five?
Okay, let's go two point five.
Next one, Big Heart Ranch, we have Bruce five thousand and Doug, two point five.
I'll accept whatever you say with the, knowing those numbers.
I think twenty-five hundred.
Next one, Malibu Film Society.
I had eighteen, Bruce was at.
Ten.
I can go down.
Scott still here?
Yeah.
Scott, is this gonna be free to all Malibu members going forward, I mean, how are we doing this?
We've never hit the fifty seat minimum, so we can basically say yes.
I'm sorry, say what?
We can say yes.
Unlimited?
Unlimited for free.
Okay, if that's, if, with that concession, I'll go to eighteen, but it needs to be free for anyone in Malibu that wants to attend.
Honestly, Scott, how much do you, how much do you really need? Is it eighteen, fifteen, twelve?
In order to keep the program running, I think the eighteen really would be important, honestly.
Okay. Yeah, we want to, we want to take care of our, we want to take care of our artistic group, and you guys are part of that, so if it, that's what it takes.
Peter Jones is gonna be recommending to the arts commission that we convert this to a theater, as you, as you and I have talked about in the past. I don't know where that's gonna go, but that's a hope I have.
And, and we do too, because if, if and when Calabasas closes, so do we. And, and we do too, because if, if and when Calabasas closes, so do we. We don't have any of this until we have a new.
I would, I would like nothing more than to see it come back into this room.
We have a very fast and relatively inexpensive option, and we have a slowly inexpensive option.
All right, should we go with eighteen?
Eighteen.
Malibu Marlins, we have ten and fourteen.
Fourteen's fine.
Who's next?
Malibu Search and Rescue, ten and twenty.
Fifteen.
What have we done to the bottom numbers at this point?
Left, thirty-two thousand.
Okay, and how much, what was our delta?
Uh, we're ten, you were ten, I was twenty.
Fifteen?
Fifteen. Meals on Wheels, I think we said.
No, no, we're in agreement on all.
No, we're in agreement on that one.
So now we can go back and go back to the ones where you could potentially explore adding more funds. The first one in question was the Malibu Surf Life Saving Association.
Okay, have we gone all the way down the list so far? I'll go.
We have.
Good, how much now?
For the Malibu Coast Surf Life Saving Association, we have ten and twenty, allocated twenty with the potential for more.
Okay, before we do, just, I, I'm sorry, it'd be easier if I had it in front of me, but give me the three columns again, where are we at, where they stand now.
So currently, Mayor Protan assigned ten.
No, 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 the totals.
Total funds allocated?
Yes, by each of us.
So Mayor Protan has allocated a hundred and sixty-four thousand. Councilmember Stewart has allocated two hundred and eight thousand. With the last round, we were also including the individuals.
And what's the total I've got this?
Yeah, what's the, what's the total we've actually committed to?
A hundred and eighty-three thousand. Left, seventeen thousand.
Malibu, left is four point, four and a half. Four point five, right?
Yeah.
So we have forty-five hundred left.
Let me ask a question of the lifeguards. How much do you guys really need? I mean, I know you need the whole thing, you know, how much can you live with?
Fifteen thousand would be able to support two of the three listed items, I believe.
Would be able what?
Would be able to support two of the three listed items that we requested.
Would you help me to read out the total nonprofits that you are exploring adding additional funds to?
Yes, yeah.
So we have the Malibu Coast Life Saving Association, the Meals on Wheels, Poison Free Malibu, and the Resource Conservation District.
Can we afford a half thousand dollars on?
Correct.
I'll do two things, one is, this is, this is just talk on top of that. Take a thousand each, maybe a thousand, eleven hundred each, whatever, and, and that, that finishes it. Or if you're willing to go to a recommendation with the, for, to the city council with less for the state, then I'm fine giving more to the state subdivision, it's, I mean, I know they're not the state, but, you know, to me, it's a more appropriate use of our dollars to give them to the lifeguard foundation, which the state ought to be paying for than it is to give money to the state to fund its, its operations. So if you wanna give them five more, take it from the recommendation from the state, I'd support that. If you don't wanna take it from the state, then I'm, then I'd say just divvy it up among who's left.
Let's take, let's take it from the state and give it to lifeguards.
Okay. So that brings us down to, brings us down to, what does take down, is the state down to?
Twelve thousand.
More than enough for that, okay. And fifteen for the lifeguards?
That didn't seem right.
No, it didn't.
For the lifeguards.
No, it's not twelve, but we have to do like.
Oh, lifeguards right now are at ten, ten and a half.
Yeah.
Then five.
No, no, what's the state at?
State should be at ten.
State is at twelve.
No.
Let's take it down to ten.
And then what do we have left?
Seven thousand?
Yeah.
So we lost, we lost the production.
'Cause I said take five out, which really should break down to nine.
Okay.
But ten's a round number.
Yeah, let's get it ten.
Leave it at ten, that's fine. But then that leaves us fourteen thousand, I'm sorry, it leaves us seven thousand?
Correct.
So we're totaling one eighty-three?
You're at one eighty-five hundred.
Let's, let's go to the three we were talking about adding money to, let's see what's, what's up there. We had Meals on Wheels.
I'm confused. Said one eighty-five hundred, that sounds. Good, give us the, would you mind giving us the three numbers again?
The individual.
Yeah.
So we have Mayor Protan, one sixty-four, Councilmember Stewart, two oh eight.
And what about, and the total total?
Total allocated is one eighty-five five hundred.
A one eighty-five five hundred, okay.
With actually left two thousand.
So we got forty-five hundred dollars left to keep away.
Yes.
So let's go back to the ones that we were not sure about, so we had. Let's see what we told.
What do you have there for the state?
California State Parks?
Yes.
Ten thousand.
Okay.
Let's do this, let's go down to the three, let's go down to the ones that we said we might add more money to, and then go back and check off the individuals boxes that we have, make sure we're right.
Let me ask one question, and what do you have down for the lifeguards at this point?
For the lifeguards.
Oh, that's after moving into fifteen, okay, that was, was confusing me, I didn't, I couldn't imagine how we had that little left after what we just did. Okay, so we have forty-five hundred left, and we had three that we were still divided on, right?
So what are, what are we?
Give me fifteen hundred dollars more.
Yeah, we've got forty-five hundred dollars to play with.
It's a Marlin.
Which ones are the soft numbers, what do you do look at?
So you're looking at Meals on Wheels.
What do you have, what do you show for that, twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five.
And what did they request?
Twenty-five hundred.
They pressed thirty-five?
Yeah.
So we can easily give them a thousand because that would not even be one-third of what's left. So bump them up to thirty-five. Poison Free was one?
Poison Free Malibu, you have that five thousand.
And what was their request?
Seven thousand.
And what's the other one?
Resource Conservation District, you're at ten thousand, requested twenty-six, twenty-three six hundred.
I'd say give Poison Free the two, the two, the other two they asked for and give the resource district the balance.
We're fine with that.
Okay, so seven for Poison Free, and we have another thousand left?
Yeah.
Fifteen hundred.
Oh, is that fifteen hundred left?
You have eleven thousand five hundred left.
Put that in the resource district.
Yeah, well, ten thousand is for the.
Let's go over, make sure we have all.
Resource District comes out to eleven thousand five hundred, is that correct?
What is the total that you would like for the resource district?
Resource District, I think it's eleven thousand five hundred, if the math is, if I'm calling the math.
So now you, you have allocated a hundred and ninety with ten left.
That's right.
All right, let's do this, let's, can you read down the numbers and let's see if we're, if that's right. Starting with eight-one-eight consultant.
Eight-one-eight consultant, zero. Accult to Peace, zero. Addison House Foundation, seven thousand five hundred. Audadia Foundation, two thousand five hundred. A Big Heart Ranch, two thousand five hundred. California State Parks, ten thousand. California Wildlife Center, ten thousand. Children, Children's Life Saving Foundation, four thousand. Emily Shane Foundation, fifteen thousand, five for the SCA, and ten for Twenty-One Miles. Esperance Center, a thousand five hundred. Friends of Malibu Urgent Care will be referred to the city council. GAN Malibu, two thousand five hundred. Hand in Hand, two thousand. Community Brigade will be referred to the city council. Malibu Coast Surf Life Saving Association, fifteen thousand. The Malibu Community Labor Exchange, ten thousand. Malibu Education Foundation will be referred to the city council. Malibu Film Society, eighteen thousand. Malibu Foundation, zero. Friends of Music, five thousand. Malibu Little League, fifteen thousand. Malibu Marlins, fourteen thousand. Malibu Monarch Project, two thousand five hundred. Malibu Search and Rescue, fifteen thousand. Meals on Wheels West, three thousand five hundred. Mission Nirvana Malibu will be referred to the city council. Paradise Cove Gardens, two thousand five hundred. Poison Free Malibu, seven thousand. Resource Conservation District, eleven thousand five hundred. Shalom Institute, ten thousand. Skin Divine Cosmetics, two thousand five hundred. And the Shumash Foundation, one thousand.
No.
No.
No, ten thousand.
I'm sorry, yes, ten thousand.
And that's what you have, right? You just set it off?
All right, I would.
I'm sorry, no, it's on here as one thousand.
Oops.
So now we're nine thousand over? What's the total?
One ninety-nine. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
It's the Resource Conservation District.
So we got a.
Parker, are you in the same number?
Yes, I'm wearing the same.
All right, so now we're gonna knock nine out.
Dark.
Yeah. So there's actually a couple here, I was hoping we could possibly swap out and get some more.
Well, let's go back, let me go back to Addison House.
That was the one.
John, do you guys need ten thousand or seventy-five hundred?
We need ten thousand, we have to pay the consultant directly.
I would suggest we take twenty-five hundred to Addison State Park.
Okay, that's fine, 'cause again, I view that the same as the lifeguard situation. I'd rather give it to the Addison House than to give it to the state, 'cause I think the state should be supporting the Addison House. So if you wanna put them up to ten, but we don't have, we don't have, I mean, we're just, we still, we're still ten thousand shy, or, because. Always do is move some money around that we don't have right now.
We still gotta come up with nine thousand.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're at ten. You got that, Cynthia?
So California State Parks is now at?
Seventy-five hundred.
And Addison House is at ten. And then we still need to find nine. Well, I hate to do it, but I mean, at the end, we threw in some additional money for Poison Free, so I think that we need to take it back.
Take that back.
All right, take back half of it at least. Just make it, make it six.
Poison Free Malibu, six?
Yeah, so now we need eight thousand dollars.
The Resource Conservation District, let's go back to, ten thousand.
So now we need seven point five, six, what do we need now?
The Shalom Foundation.
How much do we?
You're one ninety-six five hundred.
Six point five, oh, no, no, oh, eight.
I need three thousand. 'Cause you got seventy-five hundred for it.
Okay, three thousand, go ahead, keep going.
I feel like a hooker here.
You provided additional funding for the lifeguards, Meals on Wheels, Poison Free Malibu, and the Resource Conservation District.
Let's move the, let's move Meals on Wheels to three thousand, that picks up five hundred.
How mu- take it to what?
There are thirty-five hundred, right now, they asked for thirty-five hundred, let's take them to three thousand.
Okay. How about we reuse Paradise Cove Gardens?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah.
Okay. To two, at least for now, yeah, two thousand. No, where are we?
One eighty-five five hundred.
Three thousand dollars more.
We thought it was so easy.
Can we take my, can we take a thousand off of Little League and the Marlins? That gonna hurt you?
Yes, we can, or yes, it's gonna hurt you?
Yes, no, we wanna help out, so.
So, Little League at fourteen, Marlins at thirteen.
And now what do we need?
One ninety-three five hundred.
Do we need another thousand?
Need a thousand, do I hear a thousand?
We, we, we went up dramatically for the lifeguards, let's take one thousand off.
Yeah, take two of those guys.
And if we don't give money to the state, we can add more.
Thank you.
So we're either turning to fourteen thousand?
Yeah. That takes us to one ninety-two five?
Yeah.
We done it on that? I mean, we agree on that?
We have agreed.
Okay, is there any further business?
No further business.
Oh, wait, wait, technically, that's it, so is that the motion?
That's the motion, the approval, the list is presented.
Okay, and I'll second it, we vote in favor of it?
All okay.
Okay.
Handshake.
Okay, adjourned.